The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, September 22nd is now in session. The hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law and the Executive Order of Governor Baker suspending certain provisions thereof due to the ongoing public health crisis. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the WebEx Event Platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as followed: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment, please click on, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From here, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand-raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Before we get started, I'd like to take a roll call. Mr. Fortune?
Yeah.
Mr. Ehrlich? Mr. DeVoe?
Here.
Ms. Logue?
Here.
You, um, Mr. Mr. Is Mr. Ehrlich available?
Yes, I forgot I knew.
Okay, and Mr. Cindell, are you on too?
I'm here, Christine.
Thank you. Is there a representative from the BPDA?
Yes, Madam Chairman, it's Jeff.
Jeff, thank you, and anybody from the Transportation Department. Just a reminder, because of the, the audio here, please make sure when you have a motion, when you make a motion, or Jeff, if you're going to provide comments, please state your name on the record first. I also would like to make a comment about the deferral. You know, these meetings are stressful on everybody and hot and humid on everybody. I would ask that applicants, if you are in the, even thinking about a deferral, make sure you contact the, the office ahead of time, because it is a solitary waste of time for us all to be hearing projects, scheduling them, advertising them, and then just going through this process of deferral. So whatever you can do to, to facilitate that, that would be helpful. The other thing is that if there is strong community opposition to your project and you've gone through a long community process, maybe it just doesn't make sense to ask for a deferral. Okay, with those opening comments, may I toss it to you, Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning. Madam Chair, I just want to make sure on the extensions to the Governor's orders, the executive order, none of these have been expired. I will give a date, but none of them have been expired. So they're calling the first case, calling BOA 843-335-42 Chestnut Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Ian Urquhart from Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish, 155 Seaport Boulevard, Boston, 02210.
And please tell us why you're requesting this extension?
Sure. So, this is for relief for parking in Beacon Hill, and we're still going through the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission process. We appear before them, they gave us some homework to do, we're working through that with our architects, and we're looking to be scheduled with the BHAC in the next month or two.
And are you expecting that this might trigger any additional violations at this Board?
No.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for extension?
Motion to extend. Tyron.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and that's a one-year extension.
Madam Chair, do you want me to give the, sorry.
You're all set, good luck.
Madam Chair, do you want me to give you the date that it technically would have expired?
Yes, please.
Okay, so it would have expired on 8/7 of 2020, so one-year extension from 8/7, 2020.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 786-629-40 West Morland Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is George Maransi, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I thank Mr. Fortune for noting the Governor's COVID order number 17, as well as the statute. So while this matter technically has not expired, Madam Chair, abundance of prudence would be to get an official extension for this Board, which just makes for a neater, cleaner explanation for lenders to see the official extension. This is an application for, for a new nine-unit dwelling.
So, hold on, hold on, Mr. Maransi, we do have a long schedule ahead of us, and thank you for elaborating. What is, what is triggering this, this request for extension? Is it financing?
No, I was just about to say, so it's a nine-unit building, the foundation permit has actually been pulled and the foundation is in place. There was a slowdown and a stoppage owing to the effects of COVID-19 and the availability of workforce to complete the project. So my client does anticipate, my client, by the way, for the record, Thomas Noto, does anticipate exercising the relief and pulling the ERT permit in question. Again, just would like to have this appeal on the record out of an abundance of prudence.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year beyond the date of expiration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case for extension, calling BOA 827-054-623 to 625 Dorchester Ave. Name an address for the record, please.
Yes, Tanner Payne, with an address of 799 East Broadway, Unit 3 in South Austin, Massachusetts, 02127.
And why are you requesting this extension?
So my professionals and I were working diligently towards exercising on this approval, and I had some long-term great tenants in, in the building that I chose to extend their lease, giving myself still enough time to exercise on the approval, and that is when, around that time is when COVID hit and it's.
So just, just a note, please?
Yes.
That we, we are very careful about these extensions. They cannot run indefinitely, so please be prudent about, about really implementing the, the relief request that you received approval for. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year from date of expiration.
Is there a second?
Second, Tyron.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 715-581-44 Lockdale Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Secretary, members of the Board. My name is Andrew Cara, I'm attorney at Rubin &amp; Rudman, having this address of 53 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
So tell us, Mr. Cara, what's the, what, what is triggering this request?
Proposed reduction in the size of the project based on market demand.
Okay, so what, what is, Lockdale Street is in Rosendale, what, what is the, what is the change?
The property is an existing self-storage facility. On July 25th, 2017, the Board granted relief for a three-story addition. Based on demand, my client is looking at reducing the size of the projects from three stories to.
Okay, so it means that this, if this was approved in 2017, you've come in for at least one extension, and as I mentioned to the previous, previous applicant, we are, we're not going to, you know, consider unending extensions, so please let your applicant, the applicant know of our, of our intention.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year beyond date of expiration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Calling the next two cases for extension, calling BOA 708-918-32-HOTWELL STREET.
There's another case, BOA 708-914-34-HOTWELL STREET. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with an address of 15 Broad Street. We are seeking an extension, the reason being is these are deed-restricted units. Prior to getting financing or permits, we have to have a signing off from MHP. Due to COVID, that was delayed our application for a while. We now are hearing that they are reviewing it pending in a month or two, so we will be able to move forward.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year beyond the date of expiration.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 715-581-44 Lockdale Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Secretary, members of the Board. My name is Andrew Care, I'm attorney at Rubin &amp; Rudman, having this address of 53 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
So tell us, Mr. Care, what's the, what, what is triggering this request?
Proposed reduction in the size of the project based on market demand.
Okay, so what, what is, Lockdale Street is in Rosendale, what, what is the, what is the change?
The property is an existing self-storage facility. On July 25th, 2017, the Board granted relief for a three-story addition. Based on demand, my client is looking at reducing the size of the projects from three stories to.
Okay, so it means that this, if this was approved in 2017, you've come in for at least one extension, and as I mentioned to the previous, previous applicant, we are, we're not going to, you know, consider unending extensions, so please let your applicant, the applicant know of our, of our intention.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year beyond date of expiration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Calling the next two cases for extension, calling BOA 708-918-32-HOTWELL STREET. There's another case, BOA 708-914-34-HOTWELL STREET. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with an address of 15 Broad Street. We are seeking an extension, the reason being is these are deed-restricted units. Prior to getting financing or permits, we have to have a signing off from MHP. Due to COVID, that was delayed our application for a while. We now are hearing that they are reviewing it pending in a month or two, so we will be able to move forward.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for a year beyond the date of expiration.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 715-581-44 Lockdale Street. Name an address for the record, please.
John Gorman, 43 Charles Street, Austin, Massachusetts, 02114.
Mr. Gorman, tell us why you're requesting this Board final arbiter?
Madam Chair, we are actually withdrawing our Board final arbiter request. We have redesigned, which we believe eliminates our need for, for building code relief.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial of prejudice, the secretary.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Gorman, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too.
Calling the next case for G Card, calling case BOA 108-499-740-GRAE STREET. This is, this is a confirmed, as a single-family dwelling, extend living space into the basement. The violation, Article 32, Section 4, this is in the G Card applicability. Madam Chair, we do have a letter from Boston Water as well. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, member of the Board. This is Sean Kennedy, with an address of 244 Willard Street, Quincy. We are renovating a single-family, extending living space into the basement, which is triggering G Card applicability.
So, Mr. Kennedy, you stay on the line. Mr. Semenelli, are you, you here today?
I am, Madam Chair, good morning. Good morning, Board members, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have the BWSC approval and no harm letters.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Ed DeVoe.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Miller, thank you, Mrs..
Calling the next case for building code, calling BOA 107-0211-179 Newbury Street. This is a renovation of an existing brownstone, remove, brownstone removal and replacement of all wood-framed floors, stair, installation of a new elevator, existing fire escapes and facade to remain. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, this is in the G Card applicability. Madam Chair, we also have the letter for this one for G Card as well. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Tom Miller, McDermott Colton Miller, 28 State Street, Boston. We are renovating this existing.
Okay, Mr. Miller, thank you. Christian, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both the BWSC and no harm letters.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Miller, thank you, Mrs..
Calling the next case for building code, calling BOA 107-0829-213-WEST SPRINGFIELD STREET. This is an installation of a roof deck, necessary structural support, roof hatch, roof hatch stairs, the framing window installation of the top floor, and repair, partial reconstruction of an exterior wall. The violation is the Ninth Edition 780, Chapter 10, of 1011.12.2, the stairway to roof. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law, 75 Marlington Street, Suite 500, Boston, Attorney for the applicant, which is Aponte Development, and with me on the line is Andreas Wang, a project manager from Aponte.
So, just, just to clarify, was this, was this, did this come in originally as an appeal?
It did not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
It's simply a request for building code relief on the issue of access to the roof deck. The building code requires that where a stairway is provided to a roof, access to the roof shall be provided through a penthouse. The zoning code, Article 64, Section 34, has a preference for hatches, as does the South End Landmarks Commission. So the relief sought is to install a hatch instead of a headhouse. Separately, we've also had.
So, Mr. LaCasse, hold on a minute. Let's see, Mr. Ehrlich, tell us the plans.
The drawings are fine, and they show a hatch.
Okay, and does that work with, with everybody? Is this, can we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, grant building code relief.
Second, Tyron.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. You're all set, Mr. LaCasse.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I'm going to call the 930 cases for any deferrals or withdrawals for 930 only. Please, give me an address.
This is 92-28-TUNева, please.
Hold on two seconds, I can only do one at a time. For the record, calling BOA 107-8073, 92 to 92C Lambert, is it Lambert Avenue? Lambert Avenue. There's also a companion case, BOA 107-8077, 92R, 92RC Lambert Avenue. Name an address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Derek Small of a business addressed of 51 St. Rose, Queens, New York. We're here seeking a deferral to this matter, as requested by the Mayor's Office and the City Councilor. We still have to go back to the community and have two last details to work out.
Ms. Ambassador, are there any raised hands?
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands on this matter.
Is there anybody here from the Mayor's Office to speak on this?
Madam Chair, there disappeared a raised hand, hold on, please. Tell her you're muted.
Hi, I'm calling regarding 20 TUNeva Street, and this is for.
Yeah, that case hasn't been called yet.
Yes, how about Mr. Belitsky?
Madam Chair, she's, she's calling on another case, she's, for another case.
So, is there nobody here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood?
Can you hear me?
Oh, now I can, yes.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd also like to reiterate that a deferral is necessary here. There has been a lot of community conversation, and they've been meeting with the community for over a year. There's still some final details that would need to be worked out, so again, we'd like to support the deferral.
Jessica, has this, is this, is my understanding right that this is also before Landmarks?
I believe, from what I understand, it was worked out, whatever Landmarks was looking to take care of.
Madam Chair, we do have Landmarks' approval for this project.
Okay, so, when we hear this next, I'd like to just put that information on the record. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The date, please?
We have a date of December 1st at 1:00. All deferrals will be at 1:00.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
28 TUNeva Street.
Do you have two here, Matt?
I, I do, 28 TUNeva and 24 Spalding.
Okay, just, just a minute, because I'm checking my email, and it seemed that there were a lot of people on for ADA to Lambert, so please, anybody who's on, on this, I guess 92 to 92 R Lambert. Anybody who was here for Lambert, please know that this was deferred to December 1st. There's a lot of emails flying back and forth, so please make sure that everybody is in the loop about this decision. Thank you.
Good.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the first case, calling BOA 106-7375, 28 TUNeva Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Matt Eckle with Drago &amp; Toscano with the business address of 15 Broad Street, here in Boston. I am seeking a deferral on 28 TUNeva Street. We've made additional changes to this project, and due to COVID, we have not been able to get back before the local civic association, so we are seeking a deferral at this time.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Take a motion for deferral.
Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
December 1st, 2020, at 1:00.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, calling the next case for deferral, calling BOA 104-1086-24-Spalding Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, once again, members of the Board, Attorney Matt Eckle with Drago &amp; Toscano with the business address of 15 Broad Street in Boston. This matter, I was made aware, needs to be re-advertized, so I'm seeking a quick deferral to allow that to occur.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
Madam Chair, we can fit that one in for November 10th at 1:00.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 930?
Mr. Ehrlich? 170 and 176 Gladstone Street?
She's deferring both of them.
Correct.
Okay, calling case BOA 921-545-176-Gladstone Street. There's a companion case, BOA 921-544-170-Gladstone Street. Just a correction, that's Mr. Fortune, not Mr. Ehrlich.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune, Attorney John Haskell, with a business address of 15 Broad Street, seeking a deferral today for a continued, ongoing community process for the proposal.
And how close are you to conclusion?
Madam Chair, we're going to have another owners' meeting, as well as meet with the civic association again, so a couple, probably two meetings before we come back to the Board.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second, secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The date, please?
We have a date of December 1st at 1:00.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, are there any other deferrals?
Okay, let's go ahead with our agenda, please.
Calling the first case for 930, calling BOA 983-349-1-NASSAU STREET. This is to install a steel platform on rooftop of a wireless site to support install of a battery cabinet, power panel, and two equipment cabinets, install six new antenna inside a six RFP chimney, and custom mounts, and install equipment and cabling. The violation is Article 86, Section 6, Use and Dimensional Regulations. Any antenna in a residential district is a conditional use. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Edward Pare, P-A-R-E. I'm attorney at Brown Rudnick, LLP, One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts, 02111. I'm here representing AT&amp;T with respect to this proposed installation. What we're proposing to do is to locate six wireless antennas on the roof of the building, as you see in the roof plan. Two of the antennas will be to the south side of the building, and four of the antennas will be toward the south of the building, along Harrison.
Hold on, Counselor. Colette, can you please show us the view of those chimneys from the side, so we can get a sense of how they fit into the building?
I'm attorney at Brown Rudnick, LLP, One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts, 02111. I'm here representing AT&amp;T with respect to this proposed installation. What we're proposing to do is to locate six wireless antennas on the roof of the building, as you see in the roof plan. Two of the antennas will be to the north side of the building, and four of the antennas will be toward the south of the building, along Harrison.
Hold on, Counselor. Collette, can you please show us the view of those chimneys from the side, so we can get a sense of how they fit into the building?
Madam Chair, there's some photos that show the impact.
Okay.
If you keep scrolling down.
Say you scroll.
Collette, yeah, please keep scrolling, so we can just see what it looks like. In the meantime, Counselor, please go ahead.
So we're, here we go. So this is just the conversation. If you continue down, that will be the view from Harrison. So this is the depiction of where the photographs are taken. You'll see photo 1, and the site location in green, photo 2 and photo 3, and photo 4. If you continue down now, you'll see, this is the actual view of the building from Harrison. If you continue down, you'll see that we superimposed the chimney. This is the proposed view from that same location. You'll see right there at the top that we highlighted with the arrow. That'll be the faux chimney that contains one of the antennas. The second antenna is not visible on that side of the building.
Is it visible from, is it visible from any side of the building?
It is, if I could continue down, you'll be able to see them shortly, Madam Chair. This is the actual view facing northwest from Oak. And this is the proposed view. So you'll see the arrow on the left, that's the beta sector of the proposed chimney. You'll see, you can actually see two of the chimneys, one behind the other. The other is the proposed equipment on the steel platform. Again, not significantly visible, and in keeping with the background and other equipment up on the roof, we actually placed the equipment cabinet in front of existing equipment. If you continue down for another view. This is the view from the other side of Harrison, looking down, which is the existing view. If you continue down, you'll see the proposed view. So here are the, if you could hold right there. So you can see here, there are three of the proposed chimneys that are visible. And the equipment on the steel platform just comes up above the edge of the roof there. Those are all identified. And we have one more view. If you can continue down, please.
And while we're doing this, let me just find out from you. Do you have other wireless equipment on that roof?
We do not. This is a, this is a new site installation. We'd actually been through this process in 2013. The building was deemed acceptable for an installation. We've since lowered the antenna count from that previous application. So rather than 12 antennas, we moved down to six. We think that this is a terrific installation visibility-wise.
So Counselor, let me just ask you, when you were, I'm assuming you came before this board in 2013? What was the outcome of that decision?
It was approved.
It was approved, and you did not exercise that approval, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Please stay on this meeting. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
The plans are fine, and I think the photographs show the impact on the roof line.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lisa High with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. We held a board's meeting on December 10th in 2019. There are health concerns from the residents living in the area, so therefore, the mayor's office would like to go on record to oppose.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak, either in support or opposition of this project?
Madam Chair, secretary here. We have 10 letters of opposition and one letter of support.
Madam Chair, I would like to speak in opposition.
Yes, Anna, please put your name and address on the record.
I'm the chairman of the board, Anna Calderon, from Counselor Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go in opposition to this application. I have heard from residents from the building and the neighborhood that are concerned about the long-term effects of having antennas in close proximity to children and residents. And the counselor would like to voice his opposition based on that. One Nassau Street is a dense residential and commercial area with a number of schools, elderly housing developments, and other residential and commercial buildings close by. The Metropolitan Building, where the proposed antennas are to be installed, is also a residential building where families, children, and elderly live. Residents of the Metropolitan Building have expressed concerns that they were not consulted about this proposal beforehand, and are worried that the antenna would never live back quality of life. Moreover, the potential harmful effects of the radio frequency waves and radiation from these antennas are a point of concern to residents. As these antennas may pose a risk to the long-term health of residents who are close by, because of those concerns, the counselor is in opposition to this proposal at this location. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody else who's going to speak? Please give us new information. And just for future reference, I think there is enough evidence out there that, you know, that the health impacts. I would suggest that anybody who wants to talk about health impacts should look at some of the evidence and the printed material out there. But please, Karen, are you adding new information?
No, this is Karen from Counselor Abby George's office. Would like to go on record in opposition of this project. Thank you.
Anybody else, any other raised hands, Ms. Ambassador?
Madam Chair, someone else was trying to speak, I think. Madam Chair, the举起手的not associated with this case.
Given this information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Are you here to speak on Nassau Street?
Madam Chair, this is Ed Pare again.
Yeah, oh, yes. Please make a brief comment, comment, response.
I'll keep it very brief, Madam Chair. As part of our filings, as you mentioned, we submitted the admissions report, as this board is well aware. Health concerns are not within the jurisdiction of the local municipalities. We did hold a number of neighborhood meetings, and from all accounts, the opposition is based solely on health. As I said, as the board knows, that's exclusively within the FCC's jurisdiction. So long as the applicant shows that they will be in compliance with the FCC requirements, that would not be a reason to deny an application. As part of our materials, we submitted a report that shows we will be 3% of the maximum FCC exposure limits to radio frequency emissions. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions, and I thank the board and Madam Chair for your attention this morning.
Thank you. So, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
In the absence of anyone else making a motion, I will make a motion to deny. But I candidly don't have enough evidence on the science to know whether there is a genuine health hazard or not. But given the level of opposition, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second, Tyrone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You have the motion, Mr. Fair, good luck. Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 105-9450, 215 Newbury Street. This is to renovate an existing store on the first floor for proposed tea shop. The change of use from four apartments, nail salon, two stores, to four apartments, nail salon, one store, and one tea shop. The violation is Article 8, Section 7, Use of Regulations. The tea shop use item 36A is conditional. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, board. Good morning, Madam Chair. Timothy Fraser from McKenzie and Associates, 183 State Street, for the applicant Ivy and Steven Chen of Fruit Tree, Massachusetts.
So tell us, Mr. Fraser, what's being proposed here?
Madam Chair, so this is a renovation of the first floor of an existing retail store. It was actually most recently used as a kitchenware's retail shop in the shopping district of Newbury Street. And the proposed renovation would convert it into a tea shop, which is a conditional use in that area.
And that's indoor seating for 18 people?
Yeah, well, this plan was prior to the COVID-19, but the original plan was, yeah, yes. It was seating for 18 people. This does not reflect our COVID phase two, exactly.
So is this space handicapped accessible?
I think I have the architect on the line who can confirm that. I believe the renovations are made for the restrooms to be handicapped accessible, and that there is a lift in the rear.
So access for a handicapped person would be from the rear of the building? Who is the architect? Can you put your name and address on the record, please?
Should be a hand raised for Alberto, true and associates.
Okay, so tell us, please, is it sort of a handicap accessible?
Sorry, Madam Chair, that was me trying to call him out. Is Alberto there?
This is Alberto.
Hi, Alberto.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Yes, this particular area, we don't have accessible into the building. So right now, as you can see, we do carry an HE laboratory right on the first floor. But it's just based on that new design.
Okay, so there's no rear access to this building or any other way of getting into this building? If somebody's handicapped? Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
They're adequate.
Any questions from the board? Any raised hands, support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shanice Pimental with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. This proposal received a letter of non-opposition from the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, and support from the Back Bay Association. At this time, we have no further questions and core concerns, and would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling the next case, calling BOA 106-0894, 152 Mount Vernon Street. This is a change of auction from a three-family dwelling to a five-family dwelling. The violation is Article 17, Section 1, usable open space is insufficient. Article 23, Section 1, our street parking is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Lawrence, that's Dakara, 10 Post Office Square. I present Nancy Huntington and Christopher Lyden, who have been the owners of record of this property for many years. Submitted an affidavit from Mrs. Huntington indicating the usage of this property as a five-unit building, going back to the time it was purchased by her father in 1951. This is one of the many cases that many of us obtained through the years where the records of the assessing department, which call this a four to six-unit building, are different from the records of ISD.
So Counselor, first question is, have they been paying taxes as a four to six unit? That's the first question. The second question is, what's the breakdown of units and the square footage of the units? And three is, are there basement units? Counselor, are you speaking? Because I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, I will, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
There is a garden unit which satisfies all the qualifications with respect to the windows and the height. There is a small unit, a pied-a-terre, some 375 and so square feet, currently used by the woman who rents an upper floor for when her mother is visiting. And the others are quite sizable apartments, as can be seen from the plans. Configuration's been the same, at least since 1951.
I understand, but some of this-- We just need to get an understanding of how complex it works. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Well, they're frustrating.
It seems we're getting something stolen. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Ehrlich.
Yeah, it's a little frustrating, because there's no elevation, so it's hard to tell whether the basement unit is below grade or not, or how far below grade it is. There are, Unit 1B appears, there also aren't square footage numbers. Unit 1B appears to be a studio apartment, appears to be quite small. But I can't tell how small it is. And I also am a little confused about the room that says "building mechanical." Is that the mechanical for all the units? And if so, it does not look like it has separate access, separate from the other units in the basement. So the drawings leave a little bit to be desired, to be honest.
Okay. Mr. Dakara, any other questions from the board?
Well, so I would like an answer on both, how the studio apartment 1B in terms of square footage, and what is the access to the mechanical 00 floor on the drawing?
I believe that the square footage of the studio apartment is in the 375 range. That's my recollection. Mr. Lyons might be on the line who could confirm that. And the mechanicals, I believe, are the mechanicals to the entire building.
Okay, it looks like you have to go through one of the units to get to it, the Unit B, at least from what I read of the drawings. Is the architect on the line?
His name? Lyons on the line?
What's his name?
Mr. Lyons, Ken Lyons.
Ken Lyons. Mr. Lyons?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, put your name and address on the record.
Ken Lyons, 77 Newbury Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
So can you speak to the issues we have with building code and just the basic layout? Because is the access to the mechanical room independent, or is it through the unit?
The access is independent. Every unit has its own mechanical systems. Navien, heat and hot water, everything's separate per unit.
So there is, page, is it 1 of 3? The basement flow plan shows that there is a building mechanical, a building mechanical, not unit mechanical.
Well, that looks, that looks misleading. I agree, as I look at it now. The mechanical room that you see in the basement serves only the basement unit. Each apartment has its own heating and cooling systems.
And each apartment has its own gas and water meters?
Yes, they have Navien gas heaters, yes, that does heat and--
Heaters, I said meters.
Yes, it's all separately metered, correct.
All right, and I didn't really hear, it was a little-- What is the elevation of the basement unit in terms of being relative to grade?
So I thought, I thought there had been an elevation submitted to ISD. I'm sorry that they didn't get to your desk. It's at grade in the rear, there's a rear patio. And I'm trying to look at the number-- It's at grade in the rear, there's a rear patio, and I'm trying to look at the number of steps, but it's maybe seven steps down from the street. As you can see, there's a private entrance to the garden unit. And it's seven or eight steps down from the street into the unit.
Okay, and then my final question, and Mr. Dakara, I believe, answered this, but I couldn't hear because of the background noise. Unit 1B, the studio apartment 106, what's the square foot of that unit?
Larry?
Maybe the, can the architect answer please?
I don't think the architect is on the line, but I think that the square footage is about 375 square feet, as Mr. Dakara said earlier.
Okay, and there's two means of egress to the building?
Yes, there are.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shanice Pimental with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal received a letter of non-opposition from the Beacon House Civic Association. At this time, we have no further questions or concerns and would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm trying to think here. Yes. Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have four letters of support, no letters of opposition.
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
Okay, so the violations are open space and parking. I'm assuming there's just no parking on this building? For this building?
Correct, it's a street parking, same as everybody else on the hill.
Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please? And remember that the relief goes with the building and not the ownership.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, Perron.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll just put on the record that I'm opposed because I do think that a 375 square unit, square feet unit is just too small. So good luck.
Great, thank you very much.
Calling your next case? Calling BOA 102 0204, 112 Myrtle Street. This is a confirmed occupancy as 10 residential apartments, full gut interior renovation of the entire building, and no change of occupancy. The violation is Article 15, Section 1, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way, Boston, Mass.
So John, please tell us why this is triggering. If there is no change of occupancy, what is triggering this review? Is that the roof deck?
No, Madam Chair. The location is an H265, which means the FAR maximum is two. The existing FAR is 5.66, which is excessive, that's an existing condition. The renovation increases the FAR by .13, so the proposed FAR is 5.73.
And how is that increased? What triggers that increase?
Reconfiguration of the mechanical.
Okay, are any of these units basement units?
There is a garden unit, which is at the garden level walkout on the lower level, which is called the garden unit. The ceiling height is 8.1 feet, direct access to a proposed patio in the rear.
And what are the unit sizes?
The garden unit is 814 square feet. The first floor existing is a small unit of 388 and a large unit of 362. Floors 2 through 4, the small unit is 370 square feet and the large unit is 551 square feet. And the fifth floor is a single unit of 977 square feet. These are existing conditions.
Since you're doing a, this is a gut rehab then? So if it's a gut rehab, is there any way of re-looking at that space, especially given COVID and people's needs to walk indoors more frequently?
Madam Chair, I don't understand the question. The minor reconfiguration is on the lower level.
Okay, is any, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are okay. Were the, is the headhouse is in existing condition?
Yes, yes, Mr. Ehrlich.
Yes, but was it legal?
Yes.
It was legalized? Everything went through process?
Correct.
Okay. Is any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shanice Pimental with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal received a letter of non-opposition from the Beacon House Civic Association. We have no further questions or concerns and would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
One raising.
Oh, yeah, this is, my name is Dr. Rox Anderson. Sakamoto, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, put your name and address on the record and tell us what your support or opposition is based on.
Okay, so I'm Dr. Rox Anderson. We live at 116 Myrtle Street, which is immediately next door to 112. And we are opposed to the building of a new deck there. There is no existing deck, there never has been a deck on the building. And since the building was bought by the current owner, there's been multiple problems, basically no supervision, poor maintenance, parties on the deck, parties on the roof, illegal parties with people flipping live cigarette butts out, swearing, you know, obscenities in the middle of the night. This is a quiet neighborhood with lots of small children in it. Multiple violations, just everything you can imagine, trash, et cetera. And visits from the police department. We are not the only people that have objected to this, there've been multiple problems with it. So given, and we've attempted to reach the owner and have never gotten a response from the current owner. So in the absence of any responsible sort of behavior and absenteeism on the part of the owner, we're very concerned that allowing a roof deck to be on this building will just lead to more problems in the neighborhood. So that's our primary objection.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please give a response to this poor management and maintenance of the building?
The building, prior to its acquisition, was used as an A/R/B and B. It has been under renovation, there have been numerous meetings, there was a site meeting held by the Office of Neighborhood Services. There was no objection made at that point. I believe there are letters of support.
Let's just, hold on, hold on. So who is the owner of the building? Let's put that on the record.
Kevin Lyons.
Kevin Lyons, so he's been before us before. So I think it's imperative that this property owner be reaching out to his abutter at 116 because obviously if, you know, there seems to be something that's not squared away. May I have a motion for defer on this until this gets resolved?
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing. Putting a roof deck on a building where there's been problems already with roofs up, party seems to be adding fuel to the fire. So I'm gonna make a motion to defer in the hope that these issues can get sorted out.
Sir, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
You have a date of December 1st at 1:00.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling your next case? Calling BOA 105 8737, 28 Jenkins Street. This is a demolished and existing structure erecting new four-story, two-family dwelling with two-car garage, great access to it via a new curb cut at Jenkins Street. The violation is Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 68, Section 8, the front yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the lot area is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Column Dunphy. Madam Chair, members, first, a correction to the list of violations. Mr. Fortune read a height violation. That is not in fact the case. I am looking at the January 17, 2020 zoning code refusal issued by Lisa Huang. Violations are in fact insufficient lot size, insufficient lot area for additional dwelling unit, and insufficient front yard setback. The height of the building is 40 feet, it's a four-story, 40-foot-tall building, complies with the height requirement of Article 68. This is located within an MFR multi-family residential district. Madam Chair, members, the plans are quite simple, they're on a single sheet on the screen now depicting a four-story, two-unit building on a lot of 1,728 square feet. Unit 1 would be located on the second floor, that's a 745 square foot, one bedroom. And the third and fourth floors, sure, would be on the second floor. And Unit 2 is a bi-level unit on the third and fourth floors, that is 1,713 square feet, that is a two-plus bedroom unit. As I mentioned, the height is compliant, the FAR is 1.67. Off-street parking spaces would be provided in a ground-level garage, accessed by a new curb cut on Jenkins Street. Jenkins Street is a small one-way street, there is no parking on this side of the street. There are no balconies, no decks, and no roof deck.
No balcony, no deck, and no roof deck, okay?
Madam Chair, Secretary here. I just want to make sure there's a correction, they are cited for height. There is no-
I believe you, Mr. Fortune, I know it's peering on what's in front of you, but I just wanted to state for the record that it's a 40-foot-tall building and I do have the zoning code refusal letter, so we're not seeking relief on height. And that can certainly be a proviso in the light of the fact that there's an inconsistency between what Mr. Fortune has and what I have.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
I just want to clarify, it looks like the base floor plan talks about bedroom three, how many bed, I thought the second unit had two bedrooms?
The second unit is the second floor plan and the third floor plan. So the second floor is kitchen, dining, and living space. The top floor is a master bedroom, a bedroom, it should say bedroom two. And then that office space that is showing again is office space, I call it a two-plus bedroom, that could be used as either an office or a bedroom. So it can be counted as a three-bedroom or a two-plus. I just think that that's a labeling error, that should say master bedroom, bedroom two, and office.
Yeah, I mean, I think I've mentioned this before, I've seen a project that came before this board as quote "office," and I went to visit the site when they were selling the units, and that office was magically another bedroom. So I just want to make sure that we're keeping track of what we're approving here.
Right.
Go ahead.
No, I did describe it as a two-plus bedroom. Again, and I won't say this is all owing to COVID, but reference was made to that, that many more people are working at home. This could be a three-bedroom unit if the size of the buyer's family dictates, or the renters, I'm not sure which it is, or it could be two bedrooms and office space for working at home.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
They're not very good, to be honest with you. Moranci, I'm confused because there seems to be a discrepancy between the plot plan and the one-page plan of floor plans and elevations. First of all, there's no curb cut shown, so I have no idea what the width of it is. And secondly, if you look at the plot plan, the building has this little jog to the right and stairs that go up sideways. But if you look at the floor plans and the elevations, there's a garage on the right and the building is squared off, so.
Yeah, that's existing conditions, plot plan, Mr. Fortune, so that's showing the existing building.
That's okay.
Mr. Ehrlich, I'm sorry.
Both parts, so it's easy to-
Sorry, Mr. Ehrlich, that's an existing conditions, and I'm sorry, the board doesn't have the proposed, I mean, the site does show on the architectural plans, it's the dash line. So that's how the building is configured on the site, with three-foot side setbacks, and then the rear yard area, which is approximately 30 by 15.
So the curb cut is in front of the garage on the ground, so what's the size of the curb cut?
Yeah, it will comply with City of Boston requirements, so it would be a 10-foot curb cut, probably with 12 foot, including the flares, as PIC will approve it, they wouldn't approve anything larger than that.
Okay, all right, well, just in the future, please don't submit plans that don't answer basic questions.
Duly noted.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. We held an abutters meeting back in February, and two abutters showed up, and the director abutter, Colin, the proponent, he answered all of his questions and worked with them, so we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Any other raised hands, Ms. Ambassador?
Madam Chair, there's no raised hands.
Okay.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I would like to speak in opposition.
Please put your name and address on the record, Anna.
Madam, the chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from County State's office. At this time, we are in opposition to this proposal based on no meeting conducted with the Andrews Square Civic Association. More community outreach needs to take place on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moranci?
Madam Chair, the Andrews Square Civic Association has not met since the onset of the COVID public health emergency.
Okay, okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, a little reluctantly, with BBDA Design Review, and to make sure that the curb cut is consistent with City of Boston guidelines.
And also, Jeff, just make sure, give it a look over so it's not being a more interesting building. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Exposed, motion carries.
Calling your next case, calling BOA 106 6449, Six Glover Court. This is a combined Six Glover Court with 4, 8, and 10 Glover Court and 8, 10, and 12 Lead Street for a combined total of 10,735 feet to erect a new 34-unit multi-family building with parking below. The violation is Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 33, off-street loading is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 68, Section 8, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Excuse me, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is George Moranci, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, I represent Six Glover Court LLC and its principals, Joseph Argus and Thomas Noto. Madam, this is an Article 80 small project, which was approved by the Board of the Boston Redevelopment Authority on February 13th of this year. The proposed project is located at 468 and 10 Glover Court and 8, 10, and 12 Lead Street in South Boston in the Andrews Square neighborhood, and consists of seven parcels that collectively comprise approximately 10,735 square feet of land, running from Glover Court through to Lead Street. The project site is currently occupied by seven residential buildings, which are a combination of two-and-a-half story to three-story structures that are of no architectural significance and would be razed for the new project. These buildings are virtually all owner-occupied, either as single-family dwellings or as condominium units in the case of some of the Lead Street property. units in the case of some of the Lead Street properties, so there would not be displacement of existing tenants. The proponent proposes to construct a five-story residential building totaling approximately 38,646 gross square feet, containing 34 residential homeownership units. This would include six inclusionary development policy units. The building is located less than two tenths of a mile, actually just a few hundred feet, and virtually across the street from the MBTA's Redline Andrew Station, and therefore contains 14 garage park...
Hold on, Counselor. Kalat, can you please show us the view from the street, the rendering? Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Certainly. So there are 14 proposed off-street garage parking spaces with vehicular access to and from Lead Street and bicycle parking in the building as well. As I said, it is virtually across Dorchester Avenue from the Andrew Redline Station. As currently proposed, the 34 units will consist of 28 market-rate units, six IDP units, and there will be a mix of 31 two-bedroom units and three one-bedroom units. With respect to zoning, Madam Chair members, the project site is located within the area of Plan South Boston-Dorchester Avenue Planning Initiative. The underlying zoning for the site is still base code. This is H240 residential zoning, which provides for smaller-scale residential infill development. The proposal within, again, Plan South Boston-Dorchester Avenue deviates from that in that it is proposing a multifamily dwelling with a building height of 50 feet rather than 40. Because of those deviations, the proposed project is subject to the density bonus height requirement of the plan, which is why there are six IDP units rather than four. There's a 17% IDP requirement, and there's also...
Mr. Morancey, can you hold on for a second? Ms. Kalat, can you please find out the view from Lead Street? And Mr. Morancey, can you tell us if there's going to be any commercial space in this building? Go ahead.
Yes, no commercial space. The Lead Street and Glover were both on that page above. The top one is the architectural elevation on Glover, and below that is the architectural elevation from Lead Street, which is showing the garage entrance, the garage door in the center of that lower image. There is also a rendering that you referred to, Ms. Arajo, which is a Glover Court rendering, which shows how the project looks on Glover Court. There are two additional renderings showing views down Glover Court, showing how the building fits in scale with the rest of the street. The, as I said, the violations all owe to the base code zoning. I can go through the requirements.
Mr. Morancey, you know, I will say this one more time, but this particular architect knows how we feel about those solid garage doors and continues to show them in these drawings. I would suggest that we need you, as applicants, need to find another design firm that's going to be more responsive to the things that we note as concerns to us and not consistently show us drawings and say it's all going to be resolved, design review. It's just unacceptable at this time. So I just want to make sure that that message is conveyed to the architect, that it's just annoying at this moment in time.
The view that's currently on screen, which shows the Lead Street view and the Glover Court view, shows a 10-foot-wide garage door with three solid panels and then curved fenestration above the panels.
We have had an issue in other cases with that solid three-panel door, okay? So let's... Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
The plans are technically adequate. I would say, apart from the garage door, it's a very uninspiring design. It's a rectangular box that sort of plopped down in the middle of Boston. It's not aesthetically particularly pleasing, but the drawings are adequate from a technical point of view.
Did we go to the renderings? There are colored renderings, which may prove somewhat more pleasing-looking. I believe they should be...
Not much.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, is that we see projects before this board, and then we send them to design review, and then nine times out of 10, they come out looking exactly as we, very close to what we've not been pleased with. So I don't know... My thought is almost to start asking for a better quality design and plan right as the project gets before us, rather than drawing a box just as a placeholder.
Well, I need to point out that this is an Article 80 small project that went through multiple design meetings with the BPDA prior to filing. So I do have to point that out, that this has already undergone essentially BRA design review prior to appearing at this hearing.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. I think it would be a great update to the neighborhood. Thank you.
The chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flink's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support. There was an excellent community process on this proposal. We also heard from the Andrews Square Neighborhood Association, who also supported this. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor Sabi George's office. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
I think we have one more support.
Madam Chair, yes. Madam Chair, the secretary here as well, we have one letter of support, no letters of opposition.
I think also via email, we received quite a few letters of support because they came directly to my email address. They did forward it to Stephanie, so... So I'll call two, like, records, letters in support. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, this hand's raised. Do you want to speak? See?
Yes, who is it? Please, go ahead.
Minor?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, mine operates with the Carpenter Union. Want to go on record in support of this project?
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Is other raised hand, Madam Chair?
Okay, so let's go through that list.
Peter Welch?
Peter Welch in support of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello?
Put your name and address on the record, please.
Hello, this is Andrew Yushakov. I'm a right-next-door neighbor that we're literally going to be touching the walls. It's one of the... It's 542 Dorchester Avenue, TH3. I recently moved in. I'll let...
You in support or opposition?
I'm in opposition. I'll let Scott speak for me, because my English isn't that greatest, so...
Okay, Scott, who?
Scott Feinstein, also a resident of 542 Dorchester. I talked to Andrew to find out what his concerns were, and they resolve on the size of the building and its proximity to his windows and potentially blocking more of his windows. Right now, the existing building blocks his bedroom windows and the bathroom, but they are at the roof level, which slants away from our building. So this building would not only be straight up, but would also be another two floors higher and overlooking his roof deck. So he's very concerned about that because that would block the privacy on his roof deck and affects his marketability. He's also concerned about losing the living room windows, which I can't tell from these drawings how far back the building will be. So the current building just barely leaves space for his living room windows. If it's any closer to Glover Street than the current building, it will block all three levels' living room windows.
Yes, and that's the only... Then I don't have any other windows. Obviously, it's a wall for the most part, so...
Thank you. Anybody else to speak, either in support or opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Moore?
Yes. My name is Mary Moore. I live at 15 Ward Street in South Boston. I'm speaking in favor of this project because it fits with a larger goal in the Andrews Square community, to upgrade the housing stock and commercial buildings in our neighborhood. As you know, Andrews Square is challenged with drugs and homelessness. That and combined with some of the older housing and structures, Andrews Square is tired, and the spirit of the neighborhood often feels discouraged. We need a facelift, and projects like this are a step in the right direction. Some of the housing, existing houses that would be involved with the project are not in good condition. Two of the structures have not had residents for years. One of the structures has been empty for more than two decades. No one is being displaced by the project, and all of the structures are owned. With pockets of dead space in Andrews Square where buildings are not occupied, drugs and related activity takes place. New development like this project drives out that unhealthy activity and makes our neighborhood safer. We want new residential and commercial development projects to activate our streets, and they draw more desirable commercial uses in Andrews Square, and we desperately need that. In terms of height and scale, this is located near the MBTA station, Dorchester Avenue, and essentially it's in the heart of Andrews Square. There are other structures nearby that are similarly sized. We want new development that's stately and will make good impression. We're trying really hard in Andrews Square to turn things around. Please help us by supporting this. Thank you.
One more?
One more, let's go.
Caller, you're muted.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. I'll be asked of the council at large, Michael Flaherty. Although the board is aware that the counselor typically does not support any project that is in violation of Article 68, however, this project has been close proximity to the South Boston God Ave. Planning Initiative that will bring much needed vibrancy and contribute to the long-standing efforts to revitalize the neighborhood. Importantly, it received widespread support from neighbors, larger community receiving support from Andrews Square Civic Association, numerous personalized support from Andrews Square and the Polish Triangle, Andrews Square Businesses, and the larger South Boston community. In summary, the project found the needs of the neighborhood and long-standing efforts to revitalize the neighborhood, and as a result, the council has gone on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I make one correction for the record, please? This is George Morancey.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. This is Article 68, of course. When I refer to the H140, which looks like base code zoning, that's simply the district that it's in under the plan, H140, but it is in fact Article 68.
I thought it was H240, but it's...
H240, H240, I'm sorry, but it is in fact Article 68. I just wanted to correct that for the record.
Okay, and Mr. Morancey, looking at the violations, it looks like reflecting the concern of A butter who was concerned about his windows. Is that the rear yard violation? Is there no side yard violation?
There's no... No, that would be the side yard, but there is... The proposed building actually has a greater side yard setback than currently exists, and the reason for that is because there is... There will be a door on that side of the building to allow for access to the bike room and to allow for access even from the front of the building to Lead Street, because Lead Street leads directly down to Dorchester Avenue into Andrew Station. And I do appreciate those concerns, but as I said, this building would be set back greater than the current building, and there was a statement made that this building would be two stories taller than 542 Dorchester Ave. Also want to correct that. 542 Dorchester Ave. is a four-story building. This building, Sixth Glover Court, would have a setback fifth story with penthouse units with a substantial setback even from the greater setback of the new building than currently exists.
I noticed from the drawings, the initial look at the drawings, that the setback appeared to be in the front, in the front-facing side. Is it also a setback by the side property line or not?
Yes, there's a setback on... It conforms with the side setback requirements. It exceeds the side yard setback requirements on the right side of the building, as viewed from Glover, or the left side as viewed from Lead Street. And the front and the rear setbacks will also provide for, again, BRA, PIC requirements will provide for widening of the sidewalks, both on Ellery Street and on Lead Street.
Great. So given that information, Ms. Ambassador, can you please clear everybody's raised hands for us? Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with new reinvigorated BPDA design review. Back in, Tyron.
Is all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, I think you heard our conversation. Please direct this staff approach.
Yes, I will. Yep. Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 107-2012, 40 to 50 Warren Street. This is new construction, four commercial spaces, two retail, two offices on ground floor, 25 residential units on upper floors, and approximately 37,000 square feet, 27 bicycle parking and zero auto. The violations, Article 50, Section 44.2, the front model alignment, building alignment, Article 50, Section 37, the Boulevard Planning Overlay District, Article 50, Section 11. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 11, the rear yard setback minimum requirement is insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, off-street loading is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Jeffrey Dubard, you're muted. Jesus. Ryan Link?
I think we might have lost Jeffrey, yes. So we're filing for zoning relief on the aforementioned issues.
Hold on, hold on. Can you put your name and address on the record, please?
Yes, this is Ryan Link, Principal of Zephyr Architects, 315 Eighth Street in Boston.
Okay, so please go ahead. Is the applicant also on the call, or will he be joining the call?
I just saw his icon on the screen. Looked like he was unmuted.
What's his name?
Jeffrey Dubard.
Okay, Ms. Ambassador, can you also unmute him?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So we are applying for zoning relief on the aforementioned issues based on the design that we've submitted to the BPDA Small Project Review and got in board approval for after a series of community meetings over the last one and a half years. This was a DND-sponsored project that was an RFP that we entered. We followed the guidelines of the RFP and produced a project with 38,000 square feet, zero vehicle parking, 30 bicycle parking, and 25 affordable units. It is a mixed-use building. It does have the setback issues and the FAR issues that were mentioned previously, which are in keeping with the guidelines set forth in the RFP.
And tell us about the unit count and the size of the units, the square footage.
Yes, yes. So we have 25 units. They range from studios through two bedrooms. We have, let me see. Sorry. So we have three studios, we have seven one-bedrooms, and 15 two-bedrooms. They range in size from approximately 600 square feet to approximately 900 square feet. And as I mentioned, they are affordable units, and they conform to the DND unit guidelines.
And also, tell us about the commercial space?
Sure. The commercial space exists on the ground floor and on floors two and three partially. The first floor of the building contains two retail spaces, a restaurant space, and a lobby that leads to a second-floor co-working space and a third-floor co-working space. So all in all, there are a total of four retail units.
So I'm sorry, that's retail, restaurant, and two co-working space?
It's a retail, two, sorry, two retail, a co-working space, and a restaurant.
I, for some reason, I thought that your, or some, one of your businesses was supposed to move into that space.
Yes, the developer of the New Urban Collaborative is considering moving into the co-working space, and I believe Jeffrey is committed... space, and I believe Jeffrey has committed to making that move. We're not designating that space currently in the architectural plans, but there is, I believe, about 7,000 square feet of co-working space.
Are you, are you, are you muted?
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Um, who, uh, who is here for New Urban Collaborative?
This is Jeffrey Dubard. My address is 183 West Canton Street, and I'm from New Urban Collaborative.
Okay. Um, okay, so, um, let's see, what else? Is there any roof decks proposed on this building?
No, there, no, there are not.
No roof decks, and so basically you're going from lot line to lot line? Any balconies or anything like that?
No balconies. We do have a setback on the rear yard that ranges from four to seven feet. There is one corner of the upper floors that protrudes toward the zero lot line, but we have an average rear yard setback of four feet.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, unlike the plans we discussed in the last project, these are quite attractive. The entrance in particular, I think, is very nice. This is a compact living unit. The units are relatively small size, but it, it's in conformity with the city's compact unit guidelines, and there's some common space that is also consistent, so the drawings are fine.
Any questions from the board? I have a question for Jeff.
Yes?
Jeff, I mean, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Jeffrey.
From the BPDA?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Jeff, you know, I know that this was part of the release of at least four RFPs in, in Nubian Square. My question is, you know, has design review been adopted in a way that ensures that these buildings are in some way complementary to, to the, the design and some of the best parts of Nubian Square? Because I know this is. I mean, this, I, I can see tries to pick up some elements from the bowling building, but I know that we have, I think, two others that were approved, and one probably scheduled for the near future. Has there been any kind of comprehensive view of these, of these new proposals?
I can't say whether or not there has, but I can ask this morning and try to get back to you with an answer.
Yes, that would be appreciated, so that we know that it's the best of Nubian Square that's being reflected in these designs versus, you know, generally plopping in glass structures or other kinds of structures into the square.
I'll look into that this morning, and I'll try to get back to you later on today.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The proposal was fully vetted by residents through extensive community meetings conducted by the Department of Neighborhood Development, the Roxbury Strategic Master Plan Oversight Committee, and the BPDA. Many residents have reached out in excitement because it will bring additional jobs, foot traffic, and housing to Nubian Square. We'd like to go on record to support the proposal.
Thank you.
I have some raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Caller, you're unmuted.
Sorry, wrong project.
Can you please lower your hand? Thank you. Caller, you're unmuted.
Hi, good morning. This is Joe Backer. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am a Development Officer for the Department of Neighborhood Development, and I'm speaking on behalf of the department in, in support of this project. As noted, this is one of the four parcels in Nubian Square that have been working extensively with, with DND and the city, and we've been involved since the initial review of applications. And again, when this project applied to DND for an awarding of funds, which was made earlier this year, in, in support of the affordable housing units. There's been an extensive community outreach process, as noted by Jessica Thomas, and this project was also reviewed by a community-led project review committee. I did want to just respond to the Madam Chair's question about comprehensive design review. I think I can speak to that a little bit. We are working with the BPDA to take a very complimentary view of all four sites and trying to coordinate the design and the exteriors of those sites, and as noted, also working with each project team to make sure that the projects take their surroundings into account when, when the designs are submitted.
Thank you, because I know that we approved two of the projects, the Madison Park Project and the one on Washington Street. I'm forgetting the address.
Yeah, 2147.
21, yeah, 2147, and I had some design concerns about both of those, so I'd be curious at some point to see how 2147 has evolved through design review.
Okay, yep, we can definitely provide that information. We've been working with, with that team to incorporate masonry and other elements that will integrate it with the, the buildings in the square.
Excellent, thank you. Can I hear from Sam, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Samuel Hurtado from the Office of President Kim Janey, Council President Kim Janey. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, just to, you know, we have President Janey in support of this project. It has gone to an extent reviewed by the community. There was a PRC. It went through the, you know, many different meetings. So it's just, this is part of reviving Nubian Square. So, you know, we are, President Janey is in full support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else to speak in support or in opposition to this project?
Caller, you're unmuted. No other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with considering BPDA designer.
Sir, a second?
I'll second that motion, Secretary Mark.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking forward to seeing this on the ground, so good luck.
Thank you.
Calling your next, calling your next case, yes.
Uh, Mr. Secretary, can we take a 10-minute break? It's 11:10. Let's reconvene at 11:20.
Very well.
Okay? So the meeting is now adjourned until 11:20.
The Board of Appeal for September 22nd is back in session. Just a reminder that when you speak, please speak to the point and about the project. I just want to make sure because I noticed that there might be some people here on this call and on this video conferencing who are here for Lambert Ave. Just to note that that project, the applicant did request a deferral and it's been deferred to December 1st at 1:00. Can we please proceed with the next case with Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the next case, calling BOA 1074728, 6 Wise Street. This is to erect a new building for six residential dwellings to combine two lots into one lot to be known as 6 Wise Street. The violation is Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking loading requirement, Article 55, Section 8, six units are forbidden use, Article 55, Section 9, the additional lot areas insufficient, Article 55, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient, Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet, the Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories, Article 55, Section 9, the building height is insufficient, Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient, Article 55, Section 9, front yard is insufficient, and Article 55, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Derek Swann, I'm a business associate of 51 Dobson Road on Greenwich Drive. With us today are Anthony Pierre Marini, who is the architect of the project.
But Counselor, you're breaking up. Is there something you can do to fix that?
Let me see if I can check it out. How's that? Is that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay, sorry about that. And so, we're here today seeking relief to combine lots from all the existing structure on the lot, which is the current three-family, and erect a new building for six residential units. The zoning sub-district is a 3F 5,000, and the lot size is approximately 4,000 square feet. The violations, the FAR, Madam Chair, required FAR is .6, proposing 1.8, the building height. Requirement is 35 feet, three stories. We are at 42 feet, four stories. The side yard setback requirement, 7 feet from the lot line, we have 5 feet. The other side is 10 foot, the building, and we have 8.3 inches. Rear yard setback requirement is 20 feet, we have approximately 60. With regards to the parking, Madam Chair, required off-street parking per unit, so it will be six. We have none, as this project is directly across the street from the Orange Line Station, Jackson Square.
Okay, Counselor, hold on a second. What's the zoning district here?
It's a 3F 5,000.
It's a 3F 5,000, you're proposing six dwelling units. Can you tell us the breakdown of the units?
I'll let Anthony Pierre Marini, who is the architect, he can go through the breakdown and the other person, Mr. Olick may have.
Thank you. So, this is a demolition of an existing building, right?
That's correct, an existing three-family.
Okay. Did you say you wanted to speak to the architect, Madam Chair?
Yes, I do.
I think that you're unmuted.
Yes, please tell us what the, so we know that, sorry, give us the breakdown on the types of units and the unit sizes.
Next, the units are on the first floor, about 855 square feet, 878 square feet. Those are two bedroom units on the first floor. On the second floor, there are two units that are 925 square feet. On the third floor are the duplex types, we have two units at 1,338 square feet each.
Okay, okay, and those are all, and it's all a two-bedroom?
That's correct.
No three-bedrooms, okay?
I might add, Madam Chair, that this project is being done in conjunction with the Department of Neighborhood Development, and we are delivering an affordable unit in conjunction with DND.
Okay, and so, that's an off-site from someplace else. How are the plans?
It's on the property.
It'll be onsite.
And are there any roof decks proposed?
Yes, there are.
Tell us about those.
On the Wise Street side of the building, there is a roof deck which is split in the middle for the duplex units. To the rear of the property, there is a small deck for access to the mechanical units, and those are shown on the, quite clearly, the fourth-floor plan. The fourth floor is a little more than a half-story, so this does count as a full story, but it is set back from the streets, so the renderings, you can kind of see, it's not prominent from the street view.
Mr. Olick, how are the plans? This is kind of reminiscent about the, on the project we saw around the corner on Washington Street a couple of meetings ago.
With the setback panel house. This is actually quite a nice design, and it works well, and they figured out a way to do the roof decks. My only hesitation is that it's a very modern-looking design, and I'm concerned about the context because a Wise Street is mostly traditional two- and three-family homes, and this might stick out like a sore thumb, so I would like to hear from the architect and DND kind of what their thinking was in terms of this particular design. It's very nice, but I think it may be out of place.
Okay, so can you get a response to that from the applicant?
Anthony, are you there? Madam Chair, what we did in the design, I'll attempt.
Anthony just put it in front of him. He said he was muted.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, there is, it is, I agree, it is a modern kind of design. We did try to keep in size and scale with the adjacent buildings. There is kind of a, at that end of the block closer to the T station, there is kind of a mix of buildings, and we do have a slide that shows the building in context, so we tried to keep with some of the kind of rhythms and patterns and alignment of the existing buildings. But there's a mixture of Gable and Mansard, as well as the kind of modern building two doors down, right on the corner of Wise and Southern Street.
Okay, let me ask, is, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services, and a butters meeting was held on January 30th for this proposal. There were concerns based on parking and construction, but the applicant worked with the neighbors to address those concerns. They have received the support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, and the Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support this proposal. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClary from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in supporting this project.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project?
Have a raise hand. Good morning, Madam Chair. Karen Foley, Councilwoman, Nester Savi George's office, would like to go on record in supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, who's a raise hand?
Another one? Okay.
Ms. Nowa, please go forward.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to go on record, my name is Avery Nowa, in support of this project, particularly in support of the affordable housing unit that will be a part of this project.
And please put your address on the racket.
Sure, 19 Doll Rimple Street, Jamaica Plain, Unit A.
Okay, thank you. I think that covers everybody. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPD, these nine of you with particular emphasis on context.
Second tier rule.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good day.
Good luck, you too.
Calling BOA 1041605373, South Huntington Avenue. This is a change of occupancy, professional office on the first floor to a professional office first floor, one residential unit in the second floor. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of parking area, Article 55, Section 9, dimensional regulation, new proposed dwelling unit is insufficient, Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, Article 55, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient, Article 55, Section 9, the side yard setback is insufficient, and Article 55, Section 65-41, off-street parking design, sized by 8 by 5 by 20 feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Alfonso Sierra with Stone and Associates, 523 Metford Street, of Charlestown. I'm representing Dr. Jose Ruano. He is seeking a change of occupancy for the first, for the second and upper level to turn it into residential for the housing of his daughters. He has an existing office on the first floor and the basement of the existing building, so that's what we're seeking at this point.
And what's the zoning district here?
This is residential, yes.
Now, it's a 2F 5,000.
Okay, and so, it's one residential unit on the upper floors, then?
Madam Chair, it's 2F 5,000, it's the secretary.
I'm sorry, Mark?
It's a 2F 5,000.
Yep, okay. And so, it's just, and so, it's the upper floors, and it's going to be just one residential unit?
Exactly, yeah.
Is the ramp going to be removed?
The, which one? What?
The ramp? It looks like there's a ramp in front of the building?
No, no, no. It will not be removed because his office is on the first floor and the basement, so that is access to his first-floor office.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Minimal, then okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services, and a butters meeting was held on March 3rd, 2020, which was lightly attended. We have not received any concerns regarding this proposal. The applicant also received the support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, so the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClary from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilwoman Savi George's office, would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
Can you please also unraise Sam's hand?
I can't unraise it, but Sam, you can ask him to unraise his hand. I sent him a chat.
Okay.
He responded.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA 1065448, 20 Seaver Street. This is reconstruction of the basement, adding an office and common area space for the tenants of the building that will be affiliated with the Pine Street Inn. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. Name and address for the record, please.
Daniel McDevitt, Janet Avenue in Milton, Massachusetts.
So, this is what's being proposed?
So, we were before the board to get a change of this building from 16 apartments, 28 units for the Pine Street Inn, to be able to move people into this who are overhoused in the city. That approval has gone through, and the construction of that part of the project has been completed. At the time of the initial drawing of the plans, we had no idea what the basement would be configured as due to the need for demolition, construction of an elevator, and relocation of the stairs. So, what we're here to do is to get relief from the floor area ratio only for the office space for the staff of Pine Street, and a community room, a community laundry, a community kitchen, which is all handicap accessible, and a half-bath. So, what we didn't know at the time was how big the electrical room was, how big the sprinkler room was going to be, where the elevator mechanical would be, and the location of the two sets of stairs in the elevator. So, now, we have that, and so, the FAR in this particular zone, which is the Roxbury Neighborhood District, and the zoning sub-district is multifamily residential, so the zoning, the FAR in that district is one. We are currently at, with the relief we've already received, at 2.12, and with this basement support space, we would go to 2.52, or an increase in the FAR of .4.
Okay, Mr. McDevitt, couple of questions. Is this, is Pine Street a tenant here, or do they own the building?
They are going to be tenants under a triple-net lease, long-term lease.
Okay, because we want to ensure that, you know, given the use, this makes perfect sense for the use, but we want to make sure that since this is a multifamily residential zone, that this doesn't become permanent office space should or when the lease expires. So, that is something that's of interest to us.
Certainly, as, this is support space. This is so staff would be there Monday through Friday during the day.
Get it, totally get it.
With medical appointments.
Get it, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, there's only, there's, all it is, is one plan drawing of the basement, so it leaves a lot of questions unanswered. Mr. McDevitt, what is the ceiling height, floor to ceiling in the basement?
Eight feet.
Eight feet, okay, and where, there's no elevation, so I can't tell, is the basement all below grade, partially below grade?
I'm sorry, Mr. Olick, there's two exit doors that are full walkout. About 80% of the basement is above grade, if you consider the windows.
Okay, all right, that's, it would be helpful in the future to show a drawing that gives that information.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Service. Community process for the application was held in May 2020 and was well-received by the community, including the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, who sent a letter in support for the project. The office would like to go on record to support the proposal.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on this? Anybody else to speak on this?
I have a raised hand, Madam Chair. Carla, you're on mute.
Hi, my name is Lauren Lee, and I live at 17 Homestead Street. So my backyard is directly adjacent to the back of this building. And this building being affiliated with Pine Street Inn is a problem. There's been no transparency. Myself and all my neighbors were opposed to the variance, the zoning variance, when it first came to our attention because it was, this building was only ever used for eight units. And now it's, we got a notice that it was going to be, that there was a request to vary it for 32 units. So I heard the person say it was 28 units, but we were, there was strong community opposition to that. But we were never notified that it was for the Pine Street Inn. So that information was withheld from us. There's been no transparency. It was utterly hidden. When I got the notice about this hearing two weeks ago, that was the first time we got any information about this being for the Pine Street Inn. It's a completely, it's a residential neighborhood on this block. There are only families, there are many children. I've been by Pine Street Inn in the south end. There are people milling around, drinking, using drugs.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question? Have you been by this property and have there been any issues with this property?
There have been issues with this property because the construction has continually had debris, the demolition falling into my yard, and also coming through my yard from the fence. I've actually had problems with the owner of this building. I don't know if it's the same as the current owner, but going back years, I've had problems. And I have sent letters to Inspectional Services Department because the back of the building was an eyesore. There was storage for construction, there was debris, it was junk, it was a rat trap. Eventually, I just had to build a wooden fence myself, just so that I wouldn't have to look at it. But now, the debris from the demolition is continuously coming through into my yard because there's a gap of about eight to 10 inches from the bottom of the fence to the ground, and there's debris coming through. So I have asked if I could, if the owner could put some type of a barrier to prevent that from happening. It has, he has not done that. On several occasions, he did have his workers to come into my yard to take the debris out.
Ma'am, hold on a second. Mr. McDevitt, are you in charge of the construction or is the property owner in charge of the construction?
Madam Chair, the owner is sitting here with me, Mr. Leroy Alexander. And he tells me that he'll be happy to go to 17 Homestead Street and speak with Lauren today. But this was 100% vetted by Garrison Trotter and as.
Okay, I just, but what I want to make sure is that whoever's doing the construction, make sure they are good neighbors. This construction issues are something to live from. That could be really onerous on a butter. So I need to make sure that Mr. Alexander is doing the right thing by his butter. Because, you know, Pine Street is a reputable business. You know, obviously you're saying that these units are for overhoused residents, so it's somebody who needs to be, who needs to, you know, decrease their living space. So I get, I understand the need. However, if this gives Pine Street a poor reputation because of the work that the owner is doing, I think that's a real serious problem. I don't know if ISD can send somebody out with the applicant, with the owner, to visit the resident at 17 Homestead.
Well, we appreciate that. As a matter of fact, I'd give you his cell phone number for her right now if it weren't being broadcast to so many people. But he'll be more than happy to come by the house if she's willing this afternoon, and we can make all of those necessary improvements to the construction.
And make sure you send that phone number because I think you have all the panelists. You can send them a private message to Jessica because I noticed Jessica is on the line so that this can happen in a timely fashion.
Yeah, I'll send it back.
Okay, in the meantime, any other questions from the board? We've heard people in support and opposition, any other raised hands? Sam, are you going to be speaking? Any other raised hands, Mr. Basseter?
Madam Chair, there's no other raised hands other than Samuel. Let me just make sure he has no comment.
Thank you. No, we don't have a comment for this project.
Okay, Sam, can you raise your hand, lower your hand, please?
Sorry, still, I'm very sorry.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Can we do it to Pine Street only? So that when this changes hands, it's not assumed that it goes with the property?
I'll accept that as an amendment.
Thank you. And there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 101796353-Hobbard Street. This is direct, a new three-story mixed-use building with office on the first floor with two residential units above, and proposed two off-street parking. The violation is Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking loading requirement. Article 65, Section 8, office use is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 65, lot width is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9, rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the racket, please.
Good morning, board. My name is Matt Mueller. My address is, my office address is 181 Boden Street, Dorchester. Excuse me. I am the architect and the owner of this property.
Okay, so it looks like you recently purchased the property?
I put him on mute, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. That's correct.
Please go ahead, tell you, so what you're proposing to do?
Currently, there is an existing single-story commercial space. We plan to demolish that. It's an eyesore to the community. We are the, as I said, we're the architects and owners of this building. We plan to have our architecture office on the first floor and two three-bedroom units above that.
Sorry, two three-bedroom units?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and what's the zoning for this district?
The zoning is two-family 5,000 slash three-family 5,000.
Two-family, two-family 5,000? Okay. And tell us the size of the proposed three bedrooms?
They are approximately 1,250 square feet each.
Okay. And tell us, you know that this is, as an architect, you know that this is a residential sub-district?
We do, yeah.
Why are you introducing office space into a residential sub-district?
Well, it's currently a commercial space. And right next door, there's a similar property that's a commercial space on the first floor and residential units above. So we think it fits the context.
I, you know, the fact of the matter is that we don't know whether those are legitimate uses, whether they had gone through a process, or they just evolved over time. Since there is a project before us, we need to look a little bit more deeply to ensure that we are respectful of the zoning. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
They're kind of boxy and sort of not terribly interesting. I'm a little confused by a couple of things. One is that they're being called out for a driveway shall not be less than 10 feet, but at least what I see in the proposed drawings is a 10-foot driveway, so that's okay. The building, they're very close to the property lines and including right up against the front. Is that, the applicant, is that modal? Is that how the other buildings are in the area and there's no front setback?
Yes, the adjacent buildings are quite close to the property line, yes. Especially the one to the right, which is the commercial and residential combination.
What is your current, you're an architect, what is your current address? Have you done work in the city before?
Yes, we have. Our office address is 181 Boden Street in Dorchester.
Okay.
Quite close to this section. We've been through an extensive community process. We've been able to support the neighborhood and we've.
Honestly, I think, you know, you can do better. I mean, this is a part of the city we care about. Not to just drop any kind of proposal right into it because it might be the next door or just a door down, you know?
If I can push back on that a little bit, this is a, this is going to be our office. It's going to be a showpiece for us. It's going to be, we're attempting to do a net zero building that's extremely energy efficient. We think the proposal is a nice mix between a modern aesthetic, which we normally do with a nod towards some traditional elements, such as the carnations on the top, the window trims, and those things like that. And we did get a lot of support. We have, the design did evolve, and we did get support from the community.
So it looks like your neighbors across the street do have somewhat of a front yard. I would suggest between five and seven feet. So, yes, your budding neighbor goes directly to the sidewalk line, but it looks like, you know, but for that block further down the street. So I think there's a lot of work that can be done here to make this a better project. So, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sean Folima-Borboza with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was hosted on March 3, 2020. The applicant received support from Direct the Butters and Harvard Washington and Morewell Neighborhood Association. The mayor's office would like to go on record and support this proposal.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner. On behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office, we'd also like to go on record and support. Just one second, but they did go through a thorough community process, and the neighbors are excited for this couple to move in to have some commercial space and also have some more residential along that Harvard Street.
You, anybody else?
Madam Chair, no raised hands.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have two letters of support, no opposition.
Jeff, did the BPDA have an advisory opinion on this?
Yes, we did. We recommend that there be approval with design review. On one of the plans, the set of plans that we saw, there was some sort of cantilevered portion. One of the side yards, we're asking that it either be removed or reduced to ease the impact of the side yard violation. And I think the rear egress was real close to the adjacent property. So I think we recommend approval, but I think significant design review for context, maybe some setbacks might be needed here.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion consistent with that. Approval with significant design review.
Tyrone, you second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff, can I ask you, because we understand how troubled we are by this design?
Yeah.
How can we make sure that this message is clearly sent over to design review staff? Does it mean that we need to see it through approval by the BPDA?
I don't know if, kind of a slippery slope, Madam Chair, that if, you know, we do some sort of design review or significant design review on it, and it is now being brought back to the board for your approval, I don't know what that does legally. That might be the wrong phrase.
Okay, how about this? How about this, that you bring it for our perusal because we will not take a vote? We just need to start understanding that, in fact, you know, these concerns that we are hearing are reflected in design review, okay? How's that?
I will pass the word. I don't think it'd be prudent to not vote on this. I think you would have to allow us to do our job as the agency.
Jeff, no, without a doubt, we will make, we will vote on this, but we just want to make sure that we get a second look at it, you know, before it's finally approved.
Madam Chair, perhaps it could come before board final arbiter.
Let's, yeah, okay, so let's do this. Let's approve it today, because there's a motion, the second, everybody. Did I call for support, everybody to speak in support?
You did.
Okay, so everybody spoke in support. So the motion carries. However, we would like to see this in an advisory capacity when it's ready, okay? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The next project, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Calling the next case, calling BOA 1072142782 to 788 Adams Street. This is a change of occupancy, correct the currency, current occupancy to parish house, mini-market, three restaurants, 36A, 37, offices and telecommunications, no work to be done. The violation is Article 65, Section 15, restaurant is conditional. Article 65, Section 15, the restaurant with takeout is conditional. Name and address for the racket, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Lyden. My office address is 512 Galvez Boulevard, Suite 205 in Dorchester. The proposal before you seeks to accomplish what I call a bit of housekeeping by legalizing the existing uses and occupancies in the structure identified. There are no new uses being proposed, and there's no work envisioned in this application.
So basically, tell us what the restaurants are, because those are conditional uses, and what the restaurant with takeout is? The names of the restaurant and, you know, what their record is on takeout?
No, of course. So there is dating its oldest use forward. The China Sky Restaurant, since 1959, has been existent here. They're legally pre-existing. Windy City Pizza is, since the 1980s, legally pre-existing. However, they are in the process of, that business has departed, and there is a new business, P.S. Gourmet, that is in the future going to try to take that space. The restaurant in question is known as The Butcher Shop. In December of 2009, the then-owner of the restaurant, Alan Gibson, applied for use and occupancy for a restaurant with takeout and was approved by this body. However, after that, subsequent to that decision, no permit was ever obtained. I don't know why. This application would rectify that issue.
And is P.S. Gourmet going to be doing takeout, too?
Yes.
Okay, so this is basically takeout for all restaurants on this property, then? What's the zoning, what's the zoning district here?
It is Article 65, light commercial.
Oh, see, local commercial, okay. And the telecomm. And, and the telecommunication use, would that come before this board?
The telecommunication use was pre-existing dating back to 2000, mid 2000s. It did come before the board. I have a copy of the decision.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Yeah, they're simple, they're fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record and support. Um, this is just a confirmation of occupancy of existing businesses. Uh, the applicant has maintained communication, um, with the Butters in Adams Village and the local civic association, um, we'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
But you know-
Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, there are no raise hands.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Uh, with the usual takeout language?
Yeah, with the usual takeout language, yes.
Okay, Tyrone, you second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the last case for 9:30, calling case BOA 107-4490-166 to 172 Napontet Avenue. This is to change occupancy to pet spa, two retail spaces and martial arts academy, no work to be done. The violation is Article 65, Section 8, pet spa kennel is forbidden. Article 65, Section 8, retail business is forbidden. Article 65, Section 8, martial arts academy, fitness center or gymnasium, use is forbidden. And Article 9, Section 2, a changing non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tom Miller, McDermott Quilkey and Miller with the business address of 28 State Street, Boston, Mass. Um, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Red Dome Realty. Uh, the appeal before you today is to legalize the existing conditions that have been at the property since it was originally constructed in 1920. Um, this property is located in a 2F 5000 district in the Dorchester neighborhood. Um, but since the building was constructed, uh, almost 100 years ago, um, th- this property has been used for retail and service uses. Uh, and we are here before you today to legalize those, those existing uses of the property with no work to be done. Uh, we've worked with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services to, um, conduct the required community outreach and we have, uh, been in contact with the neighborhood group.
Okay, um, can we get a close-up of what the frontage looks like? Please, Colette. Um, can you tell us if there are any grates on the frontage or, or anything like that and how parking is accommodated?
So, uh, there are no grates on the frontage to my, uh, appear to be. Uh, there are five parking spaces in the rear and there is, I believe, on-street parking in the front and side, um, along, uh, Napontet Ave and Pope Hill Street, uh, where this building is, is located. The uses are also, uh, you know, neighborhood intended uses and they're walkable from the area.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Um, they're existing conditions, so we're fine.
Any, uh, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, the applicant did conduct outreach to local Butters and the Pope Hill Civic Association and has maintained that communication over the past couple months. Um, because this is an existing occupancy confirmation, we'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Joe McGeekren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, no raise hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Tyrone.
Thank you, Tyrone, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna call the next case for rediscussion. Calling BOA 103-5817-150 Chestnut Avenue. This is to install a driveway, a curb for one parking space. Violation is Article 10, Section 1.
Mr. Fortune?
Yes, Madam Chair. Well, I thought I was unmuted. Uh, here we go. I'm gonna call the next case for rediscussion, calling BOA 103-5817-150 Chestnut Avenue. This is to install a driveway and curb for one parking space. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of parking area, Article 55, Section 11, ancillary parking use is conditional, Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking loading requirement, Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking loading requirement, parking spaces are partially or totally occupied in the neighbor's lot, 152, 152 and a half, Chestnut. Name and address for the record, please.
The host, unmuted?
Am I unmuted?
Chestnut Avenue? Can you hear me, please?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
Oliver Bouchier, 150 Chestnut Avenue, to make a complaint.
Okay, so please, it sounds like this is a complicated case. Please tell us what's proposing to do?
Yes, uh, I hope it's not overly complicated. I'm here with my neighbor, Mr. Cronin, Jeffrey Cronin, of 148 Chestnut as well. Excuse me, I'm masked, so-
152.
152, I'm terribly sorry. 152 Chestnut. And we are together making a third parking space on Chestnut Ave for use of 150. Um, the point being that, that, well, one of the most important factors is it's a one-way street and there is no parking. In order to get parking on the property, we are exchanging pieces of, uh, deeded walkways uh, and swapping to make three parking places and require the, uh, a curb cut to do that. There's, um, otherwise no change.
Now, is this, uh, front yard parking because of the slope of the land? Why is it that way?
I don't understand. It's front yard because there is no, there's no other space available. It's been parking on that lot since I, we've been here since 78, there's been parking on that, on that spot. Uh, there's nowhere else to park. There's a garden, a very nice, if you're looking at the plan-
Excuse me?
Where the lot be is a beautiful garden and no one would wanna be parking on that.
Okay.
So we're trying to make it pretty and we're trying to keep 150 pretty. And keeping it nice is to have our garden, which is a three-foot, uh, run alongside 150, so that it is, it is, um, grass and flowers and roses and whatever else. Uh, and it keeps that attractive and keeps the house from being, um, you know, being a parking lot. So there is a parking-
Okay, and what's, what's the size of the curb cut? 28 feet?
Uh, 27, I think.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Um, I've never seen a 28-foot curb cut in all the years I've been on this and there's absolutely no reason for it to be that wide. It takes up, if they're worried about parking, that ends up taking up two spaces that could be on the street. Um, I also don't understand why the parking spaces have to go right to the front line, to the lot line. If they're 20 feet deep, you've got four foot nine from the lot line to the front of the house. If you, so if you just made it 25 foot deep, um, maybe it would take up a little bit of the garden, but we're only talking five feet and then at least the cars would be, uh, in line with the, um, with the front of the house and, and you wouldn't have front yard parking.
Oh, right.
So, so, uh, there's no, there's no way, uh, that, I think this board would approve a 28-foot curb cut.
Madam Chair?
What were you gonna say?
Madam Chair, may I, may I speak? Secretary here, Bob D'Amico has spoke on this and I'll read what Bob has said, uh, that he has no problem in this case since there is a curb cut in place already and there is no parking on the side of the, of the side street. Also, it's a one-way street.
You know, the, the thing that we have to balance is, of course, um, the pedestrian, the bicycle, the car conflicts. Is there any way that this would work, I wonder, uh, with a reduced curb cut? So basically, uh, there's a space for 152, 152 and a half, and a proposed space for 150. Is that what I'm hearing, Mr. Bouchier?
That's exactly right, yes.
Okay?
Yes. We have nowhere to, we have nowhere to park it, uh, on that street. I mean, for what it, there are other aspects from our life. Um, this, we have a solar car and we can't plug it in, there's no way to plug it in. I can't, uh, have to drive to Dedham or somewhere to get that powered. We have solar panels on the roof now for, for that very purpose, so I would be delighted to be able to do that, which I can't do currently. Um, it, it's, it's really about being attractive. Nobody's parking right on the sidewalk there, there is depth. There is depth to get the cars back. They're, they're not, um, no one's walking around them to, to get, uh, to use the sidewalk, that's for sure.
Okay.
Okay, can I, can I add some follow-up questions? I don't understand why you can't access those three spaces with the existing curb cut.
Because there, there's, it's just the way that, the way they're cut. It's just, it just needs to be moved a bit, that's all, to, to-
Well, it's more, it's, uh, sir, it's more than a bit.
But, uh, yeah, it's a few feet, it can be less than four. It can be, I don't think how narrow it is if we can get three cars in. I'm not, there's no great, there's no great, um, desire to, to have big wide swaths of curb cut. It's just to be able to get three cars in there.
Yeah, no, I, and you can do that. And is it possible to move the, uh, the parking spaces five feet back?
Uh, that would be, five feet, I think it's gonna be very damaging to the property that, that, at 148 because it is a very beautiful garden that we've got there. It's a, it's a lovely, it's one of the, it's one of the nicest things in the neighborhood and I, we, what we wanna do is keep the neighborhood as attractive as possible and that garden is a piece of it, so-
Right, well, unfortunately, front yard parking does not make a neighborhood attractive.
Yes, I, I understand. If it was anywhere else we could put a car, then we'd be delighted to do it. It's just, we're just in- We've got two spaces there right now, we're just putting another one in and just making it, you know, we, we, the layout for it would be as attractive as possible. Verbiage and brick and just charming as we can make it, but I do really desperately need, desperately, desperately need to be able to put a car next to our house.
Okay, hold on.
And keep living in.
Hold on, so, um, is any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services and a Butters meeting was held on February 18th for this proposal, which was lightly attended. They had received the support from the Jamaica City Neighborhood Council, so the Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, no raise hands.
Karen, are you, are you getting ready to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Karen Foley, Councilor Savi George's office, would like to go on record of this project. Thank you.
Okay, um, so I wonder, Mr. Olick, if the resolution for this is to propose to approve it, but through a collaboration between the, um, the Transportation Department and the BPDA to minimize the extent of that curb cut?
Well, I, I was, I was gonna, um, make a motion to deny without prejudice and ask the applicant to come back with a, with a design that would be, or have a reduced curb cut and to see how much they could move back the spaces so, to, to eliminate the possibility of front yard parking.
Because I think, I think there is a resolution if the, um, spaces were, were staggered, you know, so that the curb cut could be fair, could be as, as, uh, small as possible. So can we toss it into BPDA and, uh, BPDA and Transportation Department's hands?
Well, Madam Chair, if I may, Jeff Hampton from the BPDA, um, you know, we were struggling with this a lot, um, because the, the size of the curb cuts also, you know, not, you know, these approvals do go with the property and not with the people. And three front yard parking spaces in front of 152, 152 and a half, even at nighttime, I mean, there's no fence there to block the lighting. Uh, they're gonna have to move, move a, a light pole, um, also that's right there at the property. Um, we can try to do design review, but I think we probably ask for some sort of fencing, um, which may take away from the view of that garden. Um, i- it's just something that's gonna need, I, I believe, a lot of work in terms of the design issue.
So let's, let's give it a shot and bring it to us for Board Final Arbiter.
Well, I, uh, Madam Chair, I would prefer to make a motion to deny without prejudice and ask them to, uh, to, to come back with a reconceived proposal. I, I, I don't think, I don't think this is tinkering.
Okay, may I have a second to that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, uh, we look forward to seeing you back.
Okay, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-9083, 4014 Washington Street. This is a renovation of the restaurant, an addition on the front of the restaurant for takeout use. The violation is Article 67, Section 12, minimum front yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Felipe, you're muted.
Yeah, hi, my name is Felipe Duran. Uh, address is 401 for Washington Street, Roseland, Massachusetts.
Oh, yes, so this was the one, I remember this. Yes, so, uh, you were represented by an attorney last time.
Yeah, she was across the street.
You put that canopy on and then on the other side you wanted to create a huge takeout window and then we had an issue with that takeout window. How did you resolve that?
Yeah, it was asked of me to, uh, make it a little bit smaller, that's what we did and we just put it back, one of the bathroom, one of the sink. Basically, we just, I mean, put a ramp over and we just tried, yeah, do everything you guys requested me the last time we were here.
Have you seen the revised plans, Mr. Olick?
Yeah, well, I'm confused because, uh, there were two sets of plans. One was the exact same as before and, uh, the, and then, and then yesterday I got some other plans, uh, which did put the employee washroom back in, which, we, we had two, we had two, we had three requests. One was, uh, to put the employee washroom back in, not to take it out, to make the handicap accessible, um, to work, uh, with, according to code and then to just reduce the overall size. I, I do believe that the, the problem is that I have plans that say, uh, multiple, send multiple messages. So I'm not quite sure what the, what the final outcome is. Um, uh, maybe, are the plans that are, uh, to the applicant, are the plans that are now being shown on the screen the most current? And Colette, can you hit the rotate button on the, um, on the, on the plans so that, so that they, uh, they read horizontally instead of vertically?
Madam Chair, the attorneys present would like to speak.
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
Thank you, Jennifer Allen. I'm the attorney for Mr. Duran and Garrett Timbera.
So, um-
I hope you guys have the correct plans there. Um, I can review anything, as you know, we were already here from the Ju- June 9th hearing. Uh, the updated plans were submitted, which hopefully they are the accurate ones. Uh, we had, we were postponed and came back 'cause there were three items that you guys had wanted us to update. The first one, again, was the employee bathroom being eliminated. We retained that bathroom and we will not be eliminating it. Um, that was requested for the health and sanitary purposes for our employees, especially with the current state of affairs. Uh, second was if we could make the actual canopy smaller, uh, which we did do. Um, not sure, it's not on that plan.
This, this looks like it's existing conditions.
Nope, if we scroll down, up, right there.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yep, so if you see there, we actually did shorten the whole addition that we were proposing. So we went from 22 feet to 15.4 feet and made the whole, that whole addition smaller. Um, and then the last item- smaller. Um, and then the last item was if it was handicap accessible, which you'll also see on the plan. Uh, the plans have just been fixed and adjusted to ensure that it is handicap accessible. There's a ramp there as well.
No, I think I just don't understand. And that, that, that used to be a very interesting building. Um, and then when that, um, front entrance way was put in and then came in for forgiveness, um, that was rather big and, um, and it just feels that this is, this is just, you know, something else that's being slapped on. Is there a way that... So the question, I guess, to me is, why do you basically need this window? Most other places have people walk in the door and pick out, pick up their takeout. Why do you need a separate takeout window?
So, uh, Mr. Duran can also speak upon this. But I'd like to add, um, first of all, this allows for a separate entrance for the takeout, which has grown tremendously. Um, it, it was an issue before, and it's become a larger issue. It's going to accommodate the traffic along with the health and safety of the patrons. Um, it's going to allow those other patrons to come in on the other side versus when they were coming in that first entrance. Now they're waiting for their food, for their takeout. We have other patrons coming in trying to sit down. Uh, it becomes very congested as well.
So is he looking to have the takeout being the primary business that he's involved in versus the sit-down?
I think especially right now, he doesn't have as much of a choice. That's a major, that's keeping his business going, and it's essential for, to keep the business alive right now, unfortunately.
The, the thing is, I...
Lisa, you can also speak on this.
So, let me just look at this. So you're, so 6712 is, uh, so, you know, I think we're spending so much time on this, but there is a way that I think it's just need, it's needlessly complicated, when it could be just, you know, one of those old fashioned takeout windows without all this other stuff on it. Uh, Mr. Olick, what are the plans?
Uh, with the revisions, they, they did respond to the issues that were raised before.
Okay. Any questions from board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Oh, yes. I have one raised hand, Madam Chair. Caller, you're unmuted. Caller, you're unmuted. Caller, you're unmuted. Any other raised hands, Madam Chair?
Okay. So, board members, um, I, I think that there is a really low impact solution to this, so that the applicant can have takeout without...
Chair?
Without the need for the additional, um, canopy or whatever else that's being proposed, um, in the front of the property. Um, so I, I, Patrick, did you want to speak? I noticed, I'm sorry, I just heard you.
Uh, Madam Chair, this is Joe Corbinger with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services.
I'm sorry.
Just quickly, we'd like to go on record in opposition. Um, we, we understand they're facing difficulties with, uh, uh, you know, the whole COVID and the shutdown. Um, but there were concerns brought to me about congestion in the area. A, a lot of patrons that use this restaurant tend to block the lap, double park, block in the, uh, the bus stop. Um, they have concerns that allowing for this takeout window would increase the situation. Uh, they also brought up issues with trash. Not necessarily, it's not all on Guida Tambora. Um, you know, there are, it's a, a transient street, so they, uh, with the bus lane and people walking through to Forest Hills, uh, the, the blame is not to be all put on Guida Tambora, but those were concerns brought to, brought to us. So we would like to go on record in support, uh, opposition.
Thank you. Um, that's kind of where I was headed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Madam, I'll check, Madam, the secretary, I'll make, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 102, 2758, 387 to 399 Center Street. This is a converted and existing beauty salon to a body piercing studio. The violation is Article 55, Section 40, our street parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 16, body art is a conditional use in an LC sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
The applicant, Robert Murphy, who's also on the call. Um, we are here on a conditional use matter, which is body piercing at 387, uh, Center Street from Jamaica Plain. The applicant did appear before you back in June. Um, he deferred, uh, trying to get back into the community process, which had been delayed due to COVID. We've since gone to JP Neighborhood Council and received the support of the zoning, um, committee. Uh, the, uh, applicant currently operates a body piercing studio in Providence, Rhode Island.
So, hold on, counselor. Um, so this is, this is purely body piercing, right?
That's correct. They'll also be selling.
There's no tattooing or anything?
No tattooing or anything, no. This is, um...
What's, what's this, how, how many square foot? It's 17, 80 square feet? He looks like there's three piercing rooms. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, Mr. Olick.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services, and a butters meeting was held for this proposal December 12, 2019. The applicant did receive the support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, and the mayor's office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClary from City Council and Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Counselor Ross, is there, um, any grates on the front of this building?
As a matter of fact, the applicant has agreed to remove grates from the building.
Okay. Um, may I have a motion for design review so that, uh, we make sure that all grates are removed and the signage is upgraded in some way, please?
Motion, motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck with that proviso.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 105, 6729, 171 Newbury Street. This is changing from retail store to tatoo parlor. The violation is Article 8, Section 7. Use of Item 43A, body art establishment is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Jason Tooby, and it's regarding 171 Newbury Street.
So tell us, um, can, um, Colette, can you please pull up the drawing? Uh, and this is a regular tattoo parlor?
It would be, uh, with, uh, tattooing and body piercing. However, I would, uh, request if the board would grant me another deferment. There were some, uh, challenges that, uh, due to COVID, uh, are trying to be repressed between, uh...
May I have a motion for deferral?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We have the date of December 1st at 1:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the final case for a discussion for 11:30. Calling BOA 104, 3021, 40 to 42 Prince Street. This is a change of occupancy from office space to a psychic, psychic reading office. No work to be done. The violation is Article 43, Section 19. Use is forbidden, requested use is forbidden, and the zone is residential. Name and address for the record, please.
Um, any raised hands on this?
No, I'm checking. I don't see any raised hands.
And the applicant is not here for this?
Nope. Victoria Tenny.
Um, Justin, are you speaking on this?
...because of that, uh, you know, it's...
Okay. So may I have a motion to deny without prejudice?
I'll make the motion as Secretary, deny without prejudice.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, Tara.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Mr. Secretary, can we go to the recommendations and hearings, please?
Sure, Madam Chair. Give me two seconds here. These are the recommendations that were heard on Thursday, September 17th, 2017, at 10:10 Mass Ave at 5:00 PM. First case, calling BOA 1070934, 103 Cottage Street. Was a roof deck. It was approved with proviso. Uh, case BOA 1092206, 440 to 458 Rutherford Avenue. It was the Cambridge, Cambridge Props Develops Natural Substantial Food Coatings. It was approved. Case BOA 1051806, 5 Wallace Court. It was a change of occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a single-family extended living space. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1071903, 29 High Street. Construct a new headhouse, roof access. It was, it was approved with no headhouse. Case BOA 1090206, 441 to 445 Hanover Street. Adding a takeout to an existing restaurant, including student deli cases, it was approved with takeout, proviso. Case BOA 1066030, 2 to 14 High Street. It was a change of occupancy from a restaurant to coffee shop. It was approved. Case BOA 1076053, 283 Dodman Street. It was a change of occupancy, include body art, permanent cosmetics. It was approved. Case BOA 1064605, 214 Metropolitan Avenue. It was a strip and renovate unit one and two. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1057679, 18 Birchcroft Road. It was to legalize all work and third floor front deck conforming to a new drawing. It was deferred to 1119, 2020 to the Subcommittee. Case BOA 1092405, 9 Littledale Street. It was adding, it was, uh, improved the living space, the attic level, and, and adding a dormer to the north and south side of the house. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1068603, 29 to 31 Brookdale Ave, Brookdale Street. It was a new curb cut, new driveway. It was approved with BPDA and no front yard parking. Case BOA 1092467, 59 to 61 Willow Street. It was a dormer out attic and add a second floor living space, include three bedrooms. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 10, 1092735, 50 Gardner Street. It was a one and a half story addition in the rear of the existing building, including two open-air decks. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1084489, 87 to 89 Grayton Road. It was a, remove an existing back porch and replace with new decks. It was approved. Case BOA 1086905, 134 Rhea Westmore Road. It was a rectory small garage in the rear of the dwelling. It was approved with BPDA. In the last case, case BOA 1098372, 19 Greta Road. It was to construct 305 square feet, first and second floor living space. It was approved with BPDA. That concludes the Subcommittee's report. We need a motion.
Motion to, uh, concur with the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carry. Um, the meeting is now adjourned until 1:00. Um, the meeting is now adjourned until 1 o'clock.
For September 22nd is back in session. Let's go right into the hearings for the first for 1:00 PM, excuse me. Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call any deferrals or withdrawals for the 1 o'clock cases today.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Address, please.
7 Wordsworth Street.
For the record, calling BOA 102-4093, 7 Wordsworth Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 15 Broad Street. On the Vice Mayor's Office, we are seeking a deferral for 7 Wordsworth Street. Apparently, there was this, our last deferral was pre-pandemic. We did make a number of changes. The Mayor's Office received calls from folks in the neighborhood wanting to have another meeting to review all of those changes again. And in light of the situation, we have been asked if we can get a sooner rather than later deferral. I know the Mayor's Office is prepared to give us a meeting next week, so.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second. All those in favor? Date, please.
Yes, I'm checking on the availability right now. It is November 10th.
11:10, okay.
November 10th, yes, at 1 o'clock.
At 1, okay.
Mr. Zell.
So you're all set, Mr. Drago, on 7 Wordsworth Street. The next case, please.
Address, please.
I do have another one. This is Jeff Drago again.
Sure. Address?
103-111 Arch Street.
Yes, he has that on. That was one I was going to talk about. We have it on the, for next week's September 29th meeting.
Correct.
So for clarification, it's not on for today? It is on for September 29th?
Madam Chair, Kevin O'Connor here. I don't think it's realistic that that would be ready to be heard on that date.
Oh, I see, I see. So is that, so Jeff, you're asking for a deferral on this?
So, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Drago with 15, address of 15 Broad Street. We were prepared to go forward. We got a call from occupancy's legal counsel. Apparently, the law department, this is an executive suite matter, change of use, and is putting together a memo with some guidelines, I believe, Madam Chair, that the board had been looking for and some advisory opinion. And so they had asked us, did it be a note for the 29th? But if that's not prepared yet.
So this is a motion for deferral. May I have a motion for deferral?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Tyrone.
Thank you, Tyrone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose the date, please? Mrs. Secretary.
November 17th, Madam Chair.
November 17th, okay. 11:17 at 1.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
Mr. Secretary?
Yes, go ahead.
3305 Washington Street.
For the record, calling BOA 104-6244, 3305 to 3307 Washington Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Tim Johnson, Architect, 599 East Broadway, Boston. Madam Chair, members of the board, this project was before the board in March of this year. Fifteen units with one commercial. The board felt it was too dense. They gave us this opportunity to defer to today. Redesigned the project with the BPDA's assistance to 10 units with one commercial with full of butter support. However, last Thursday, the Mayor's Office called and asked, requested more community process, which we can do virtually as soon as possible. Therefore, we'd like to respectfully request a deferral.
Yeah, may I have a motion to that effect?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We are now into December, December 8th at 1 o'clock.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Okay, let's move to Webster Street.
Hold on, Madam Chair. We do have one other deferral. Well, they're asking for a deferral, but they didn't, they're not on the, doesn't sound like they're on the, on the, online right now. I can wait till we can call it.
So did they ask for a deferral in writing?
I'm being told that they're asking for a deferral, but no, it is not in writing.
Okay.
I'll just wait, enough volume until when it comes up.
Okay.
All right, so calling the first case. Case BOA 100-9944, 182 Webster Street. This is to confirm occupancy is a three-family dwelling, full renovation of existing three-family, extend living space to the basement for Unit 1. Violation is Article 53, Section 9. The floor area ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, while we wait for that, this is, I'm going to recuse myself from this case.
And, and recusing yourself, okay. So for the record, I have to put on the record that there are five sitting members then with this recusal. So the applicant needs to have everybody in support. So they, you can go ahead today, or the option is to defer until you have a fuller board. So I'm assuming is the applicant on the line?
Madam Chair, and members of the board?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Patrick Mahoney for the applicant Julia Sokol of 182 Webster Street.
Mr. Mahoney, you heard what I just said about a five-member board. What is your decision?
Yes, Madam Chair, I appreciate that. We will proceed.
Okay. So please, so we have your name and address on the record. Please tell us what's being proposed.
182 Webster Street, Madam Chair, is an existing three-family building, and occupancy has been confirmed through occupancy committee. The proposal is to extend living space into the lower level, making the three units with a slightly different configuration than is, than was initially proposed and is currently existing. So Unit 1 would consist of three bedrooms, two baths, and would be approximately 2,100 square feet. As proposed, Unit 2 would be a two-bedroom bath at about 1,300 square feet. And Unit 3 is a, is a multi-level unit, which would be three bedrooms and two baths. Madam Chair, it's worth noting that we did have an extensive community process here.
So, hold on. So let me just understand this. So your, your violation is FAR. So talk about your extension of building space, because I'm assuming that's what's triggering your, your violation. So talk to us about the extension of living space to the basement. First, what's the floor to ceiling? Two, if it's purely basement, or is, is there, is any of it above grade? And three, is the utility room separate from the unit?
Yes, perfect. So the existing floor area ratio is approximately 2.4, and we are seeking relief, bringing it to 2.9. The lot size is 1,817 square feet currently. The basement is a full-size basement. It's about 7'7" finished area. It's partially above grade in the front, about 3 feet above grade, and then it slowly tapers back into the rear, bringing it to about 50% above grade. The mechanical rooms and utilities are entirely separate, as well as common storage is separate. And the living space, the proposed living space is accessed by an internal stairwell from the first-floor unit. So the first-floor unit, the basement is not, for example, an exclusive basement unit, but rather a duplex unit with the above-grade area. Does that?
That makes sense. Yep, go ahead then. Okay, hold on a minute. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
The plans are okay. Mr. Mahoney answered most of the questions that, that I wish the plan had been on the plans, but I'm a little confused about the egress on the basement, garden level, whatever you want to call it. I see there's one exterior door by the common storage. Is that the only means of egress?
Mr. Ehrlich, that's the only common means of egress through the building? There's additionally an egress window in the front, which was part of the proposal, as well as a potential egress window through the living room in the middle, but that is a living room, not a bedroom.
You mean throughout, what, these, through the window wells?
Exactly. So in the front proposal, if we're looking at drawing A02, we have a...
I'm looking at the garden-level egress plan.
So, Cola, can you please pull up A02?
Okay. I just use A02, Mr. Ehrlich, because it shows all, so we can handle egress throughout the building. So if we can see the front and garden-level egress plan, first, 1 and 2 is both one unit, that's Unit 1.
Right.
We have one common egress, because the basement is available to the entire building, and where the mechanical room, the common storage in the storage room, as well as the egress going out to the side alley, which is also on the same lot as this property. And that is the building, one form of building egress, as well as that unit's egress, meaning to add, for the Unit 1 occupants to egress to outside, they have two choices from the basement. One is to go through the, you know, in an emergency situation, the window well egress in the front. The other opt, which is required by code for bedrooms.
Right.
The other option would be to leave the unit and to egress out through the common stairwell and exit by the common storage.
But how do you, how do you ex, you can't, I don't, on the drawing, I can still see when you go from the unit to the common storage area without going upstairs and then back down.
There is no door shown in quote study, common storage.
I apologize, that's what's accurate, that was on a pre-visit set. It is required by code. So prior to permit issuance, it would be required, it would be installed in the living area, in the living room.
A door to the, to that hallway there.
Exactly.
And what is the floor to window sill height in, of the, of the unit, of the window wells?
The one that's in the front bedroom now is proposed as part of this plan, and has to be less than 42 inches above the finished floor.
I didn't say that, you're breaking up.
The, so it's part of this permit, part of, part of this permit request for the zoning relief, that's installing a window, an egress, 42 inches above the finished floor to the top of the sill. Per...
42, okay. I'm sure as you know, 44 is a minimum.
Exactly.
Yeah. All right, then, okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to put on the record in support for this proposal during the community, the community process. The Office of Neighborhood Services held two abuaries meetings for this proposal, where the applicant were close with the abuaries and addressed most of their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two raising us, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support of this proposal.
Thank you.
Cola, you're on mute.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilwoman Sabby George's office.
Thank you.
You are.
Cola, you're on mute.
Hi, my name's Mary Cole of 251 Webster Street, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association. The Neighborhood Association voted to oppose this project, with seven residents voting in favor of the project and 20 voting in opposition. However, since that vote was taken, the developer has worked with the abuders to resolve the proposed requests for variances that led to a negative vote. The key concerns of the abuders were that there be no changes to the roofline and no increase in height, which I see has been honored. They also requested no extension of the building to the rear. The abuders did not oppose the extension into the basement. The extension of the basement was fine with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Gary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next two cases, calling case BOA 985-474-362 Princeton Street. There is a companion case of building code, BOA 985-475-362 Princeton Street. This is to extend living space into the basement of the first-floor unit only, existing condition, no work to be done. The violation is Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. This is building code. This is the 9th Edition 780 CMR, Chapter 10. Stairwell width insufficient, Section 10, 11.6. 9th Edition 780 CMR, Chapter 10, Section 1003.3.1. Protruding objects by beam, 5'9 1/4" to include obstructed stair headroom to the rear exitway. 9th Edition CMR, it's Chapter 10, Section 1003.2. Ceiling height insufficient, 7'6" is required. 9th Edition, Chapter 10, Section 10, 11.6. Stairway landings, 1'6" is proposed. 9th Edition, Chapter 10, Section 1003.6. Means of egress continuity without obstructions or reduction in width. 9th Edition 780 CMR, Chapter 12, Section 1208.2. Minimum ceiling height proposed is 6'6 1/2". Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can anybody hear me?
Yes, put your name and address on the record.
Hi, Brian Foley, address is 831 East 3rd Street in South Austin.
Okay, Mr. Foley, can you speak closer to your mic? And this, and really, what we always do with our projects, we first hear about the request for building code relief before we talk about zoning code. And this is quite a long list of, you know, relief that you're asking on the building code front, so please speak to that first.
Yes, yes. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, so the drawing that we're looking at here actually addressed all of the building code violations. What the gentleman read off a minute ago was from our initial, so about a year and a half ago, we had filed a permit request. This is before we had the violation.
Okay, so hold on, so hold on. So you do not need building code request, relief then?
Correct. According to these drawings...
Okay, hold on, hold on. Okay, if you, if your drawings show that you do not need building code relief, may I have a motion denying it?
Yeah, I'm, the applicant is correct. I'm drawing A4, it shows the ceiling height 7'6 3/4", so I'm going to make...
And it talks about, and it talks about the beam, and it talks about the stairway, etc., etc.
So I'm going to make a motion to deny any building code relief.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Ed Devault.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's get to the code relief.
For, for the zoning?
Yes.
So it's an FAR, we're currently, we're just over 1, and this would take us to 2.16. We did meet before the Eagle Hill Association.
While I have you on, please talk about, about your proposal. We'll hear about the community process from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, but tell us what you're proposing to do.
So what we're proposing is to increase the ceiling height in the basement to 7'6". There are two rooms in the basement. One would be the extended living space. That would be the living space for what would be a two-floor Unit 1, first floor and basement. The basement, we're proposing that we dig to a point where it would be adding back four inches of concrete to bring the ceiling height to 7' 6".
Okay, so, so, so this is the, so the layout is that somebody would enter the unit and go direct, somebody would directly enter the unit down the stairs. Is that a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom unit in the basement?
It's, so it's a, it's a two-floor unit. We're proposing to make the basement part of the first floor.
Okay, and what's the living space in the basement supposed to be? Is it a bedroom?
There'd be an open room, which would be a living space, and then the front room under, at the sidewalk, would be a third bedroom.
Okay. And are you proposing any dormers or anything?
Well, our designer is, he just texted me. He's actually, he can't get unmuted. So I'm not sure what you mean by dormers.
What is his name?
Rod Rivera.
Okay. Ms. Ambassador, can you find Rod Rivera, please?
He's unmuted.
Thank you.
I can hear you guys now.
Oh, hi, Rod.
Yeah, tell us about what's in the basement.
So the ba-
And if the utility rooms are separate, is separate from the unit?
Well, right now, it's the boilers, the water heaters actually are in the far back of the building on the right-hand side. We are gonna take those out and we're gonna put tankless on each unit. And that spare room, that little storage area will be just for storage. There won't be no utilities there.
Okay, so stay, please stay on this meeting. Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Well, the plans do show 7' 6" on the ceiling height, and other than that, they're okay. I mean, I mean, it's fine. And so, but, but what about, so the architect, what, you said you'd move the water heaters. What about the electrical and gas? And what about any other mechanicals?
So all appliances in the, in the units above would be all electric, meaning the stove would be electric. The electric panels for second and third floor would be brought up to the, each unit itself. The one for the first floor, which is part of the basement unit, it would stay where it is.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll build something closer than with, where you see the dotted lines. We'll just make a little wall and protect that panel from anybody touching the panels or, or we'll protect it anyway.
Okay, I mean, Madam Chair, I should, I should point out that what we're looking at for drawings doesn't show what Mr. Rivera is saying. But he's, and so at some point, ISD needs to get the updated set of drawings.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support during the community process. This proposal received support from the abutters and members of the Eagle Hill community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support of this proposal.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, any raised hands?
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, but withholding signature until updated plans are provided that reflect Mr. Rivera's comments.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. You are all set with that proviso, Mr. Foley.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Calling the next two cases. Calling BOA 975- Calling case BOA 975-065-7 Beaver Place. Companion case BOA 999-900-7 Beaver Place. This is to remove the front facade and the building of structural elements, primarily floor joists and rafters. The violation is Article 13, Section 13-1, insufficient graveyard setback. Article 32, Section 4, Chicotta applicability. And we also have building code. The Ninth Edition 780 CMR, Chapter 7, section 705.8. Exterior wall openings proposed. Three feet from the lot line is not permitted. Name and address for the record, please. Stephen Hayne, 173 Norfolk Ave.
Ms. Ambassador, this applicant needs some help. Mr. Foley, can you please put up, get off, unmute yourself, please?
I'm unmuted.
Yes, okay, is there any, can we deal with the echo in some way?
Yeah, I just, he was logged on twice, and I just expelled one of his, so he's all set to go.
Okay, so, Mr. Payne, put your name and address on the record. And as previous applicant, can you just talk about your building code violation first?
Well, what I would, what I'd really like to do is defer this. And I was unable to, I was muted when I was, when you were asking for deferrals. We want to have a-
Excuse me, to ask why you're requesting a deferral?
Because we want to have on a butters meeting, on a butters meeting and the Beacon Hill Civic Association meeting beforehand, which is how it was organized, but pre-pandemic.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Evolve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
The date of December 8th.
December 8th at 1 o'clock, Mr. Payne.
December 8th, 1 o'clock. Okay, thank you very much.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 101-8299, 620 to 622 East 8th Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family by extending into the basement and remodeling the third unit. The violation is Article 27P, Section 5. This is in the South Boston iPod. Article 68, Section 7. The dwelling unit is forbidden use in the basement. Article 68, Section 33. Off-street parking requirement is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8. The usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Payne? We need the Terranova's, either Mark or Deanna Terranova.
I, yeah, I'm trying to tell Mr. Payne to stop taking himself off mute. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah. I do not see either of those people, Mark or Deanna.
Okay, let's hold back for a little while and move to the next case.
Calling the next two cases. Calling BOA 102-3262, 26 to 28 Perrin Street. There is a companion case BOA 102-3265, 26 Rear Perrin Street. This is erecting new two-and-a-half-story four-family dwelling with three bedrooms, two full baths, and all four units.
Mark?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Come on, Mr. Court, you got Perrin Street?
Yep, I'm gonna call him right now.
Yeah, cool.
Calling case BOA 102-3262, 26 to 28 Perrin Street. There is a companion case BOA 102-3265, 26 Rear Perrin Street. This is 26 to 28 Perrin. This is erecting new two-and-a-half-four-family with three bedrooms, two full baths, and four units. There will be a four-car garage built at grade behind the dwelling. The violation is Article 50, Section 28. A multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29. The building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 29. The usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. The side yacht is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 44, conforming with existing building alignment. This is for 26 Rear Perrin Street. Constructed a 22-by-38 four-car garage behind the proposed four-family dwelling at 26-28 Perrin. The violation is Article 50, Section 28. Accessory parking garage is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29. The maximum occupancy for accessory buildings in the rear yard is excessive. And Article 50, Section 44. The accessory building in rear yards cannot exceed 15 feet in height. Name and address for the record, please.
We've had quite an extensive public process on this project.
Hold on, hold on one minute, Mr. Rivera. Put your name and address on the record and tell us what you're proposing. We will hear about the community process from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services.
Thomas Rivera, 25 Cherry Road, Hingham, Massachusetts. We're proposing to erect a four-family dwelling on a 10,402-square-foot lot. When we went through this process previously, the neighborhood groups requested that we combine both 26 and 28 Perrin Street into one lot. And we have done that. And-
Okay, and so it looks like you have a very long lot. You're proposing a four-family dwelling with a four-car, with, how many, how many car garage? Four-car garage. Tell us about, yeah, tell us about, please, the, the number of, the sizes of each bed, of each unit. They, tell them, tell us whether they are one, twos, or three bedrooms, and the sizes of each unit.
All the units are three-bedroom, two-bath. And Unit 1 is 1,874 square feet. Unit 2, 1,865 square feet. Unit 3, 1,783 square feet. And Unit 4 is 1,765 square feet. Each unit has its mechanical systems within the unit. Unit 1 and 2 comprise the first floor and the ground floor. And Unit 3 and 4 comprise the second floor and the walk-up attic.
So, Ms. Kala, can you please bring us to the layout of the first unit? Because we just need to double-check if that, if, what's the floor-to-ceiling height in that? Is it in a, is that part of the basement? Mr. Rivera?
It's a new structure. The ceiling height is approximately 7' 8". There's an area way at the front bedroom window with a sill height of 42 inches above the finished floor.
So this, so, so you're proposing to do new construction with basement living? Is that what I'm gathering?
Yes, we do utilize bedrooms down in the lower level along with the mechanical and storage in the rear half of the lower level for Unit 1.
Kala, can you please pull up the rendering from the sidewalk? First of the dwelling and then of the garage. Mr. Olick, can you, how are the plans?
The plans are okay. Mr. Rivera has kind of discussed the open questions. The one question I have, Mr. Rivera, on the, on the plot plan that shows the, the building and the garage, it doesn't show a curb cut and it doesn't show what the width of the driveway is. Can you, can you tell us what those are?
I can. Let me go to that last sheet. The curb cut is nine feet. You'll see on the site plan where I, all the revisions have been global to reflect revision of landscaping, location of trash receptacles.
I just want to know, I just want to know what the width of the driveway is.
Nine feet.
Nine feet? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office received a mix of support and opposition for the project, citing that a four-unit does not fit the existing footprint of the lot and neighborhood. However, there is a mix of multifamily homes on the street, including a four-family that is directly across from the property. Residents who did reach out in support of the project were very excited about the proposal, which will allow the owner's growing family to live and stay in the neighborhood. I've had 36 letters of support and 12 letters of opposition. The area is in a historic part of Roxbury with very beautiful homes. Our office appreciates the fact that a home does not need to be torn down in order to make room for this proposal, since it's on a vacant lot. We'd like to go on record to support the project pending BPDA design review to ensure the character of the home is consistent with the neighborhood.
So Jessica, I have a question for you. This applicant is proposing, in new construction, to have somebody have their bedroom in the basement. Any thoughts on that?
No, I know during the last meeting, when it was in person, there was the family members and a lot of the Somali community came out to support the project if any questions or issues about the basement bedroom.
Yes, okay, I remember this project well. So let's, anybody else to speak, support, or in opposition?
Madam Chair, the secretary here. I just wanted to reiterate the Mayor's Office. We also have those letters of support and non-support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, since it's in a historic district, does it need a separate process of approval?
I would think, I mean, I don't know if it's a, let's hold on a second. Jeff, are you on the line still? Jeff Hampton, BPDA-
Yeah.
Jeff, is, do you know if the recommendation talked about whether if it was in the design, a really historic district or if it was a big design overlay district?
Well, it was in the Moreland Historic District. And our recommendation was deferral. We think that the proponents should meet with some of the, or at least have a meeting rather with some of the urban design folk here. We, the words that were used by our planner for Roxbury were extensive and intense design review due to its location.
Yeah, I-
Garage alignment-
Yeah.
Building be addressed.
I agree with that. Because this is, this is an interesting street. Okay, was there any opinion in new construction having bedrooms in the basement?
I was not involved with that. I know how the board feels, and Madam Chair, especially about basement units that are new construction. It's one of the reasons why they are forbidden use. But we didn't really address that.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead. Is there anybody else to speak in support or in opposition to this proposal?
I have two raised hands. Hold on three. Caller, you're unmuted. Caller, you're unmuted. Hello?
William, you're unmuted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Madam Chair and the board. Will, I live at 22 Perrin. I'd like to speak in opposition to this project.
What is, I'm sorry, your name and address again?
It's William Mead.
Okay.
22 Perrin Street, directly next door. I'd like to speak in opposition of this project. And all abutting neighbors I've spoken to who have also sent letters have also been opposed to this project. There were 30 letters sent of opposition. We believe it's too excessive. It doesn't, it doesn't stay within the zoning code. It doesn't need to go beyond the zoning code. And there's a lack of open space, green space. We're worried about air quality.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project?
Yes, Madam Chair. Caller, you're unmuted.
Yeah, hello, my name is Aiden Almet from 5 Weaver Way of Roxbury. And on behalf of the community, I support this project.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project?
Lorraine, you are unmuted.
Hi, this is Lorraine Payne Wheeler. And I submitted a letter on behalf of the Neighborhood Association, Roxbury Path Forward. And I also am an abutter on Morgan Street. And I can understand, you know, what's being said, that many people in the community support the project. However, with respect to this neighborhood and abutment. Who is that? 30 letters were submitted, including one from the Neighborhood Association. And I mean, basically, we did hold an onsite abutment meeting on June 20th. And the architect and the owner, you know, they were very kind about coming out and explaining to neighbors the plans. But with respect to the number of units, there just is no agreement. And the other issue that I would raise is that the, and I, and I put this in the letter. I listed every parcel on Perrin Street.
So.
Basically, this is a street that follows one-two family zoning. And, you know, there are many streets in Roxbury that are having many more units than that, but this isn't one of them. And then we, so we would just like to be treated like the project on Shellman and VFW Parkway. VFW Parkway is a much busier street than small Perrin Street. And yet that project was denied for one unit being added on a street that, you know, didn't follow that design. And so we would really like the board, you know, given that Article 7 requires that the three standards be met, which are not met in this case, we would just respectfully ask that the project be denied without prejudice and.
So, Ms. Payne Wheeler, so you are asking that since the, if, if I may summarize what you just said, that the, that the street appears is one-of-two-family, you would like that building to form as a neighborhood resident be respected?
Yes, and I, I would say three-family would be very acceptable. The, the, the architect and the owner, they did agree that the design could be changed so that they wouldn't need a variance for the height of the building and they wouldn't need a variance because the garage is more than 15 feet. They also said that the FAR meets the standard. I'm not sure how that can be when they have so many bedrooms. So the board should take into consideration the number of people that will be on this lot. And as you said yourself, the bedroom was not in the basement. It was a two-bedroom apartment. I mean, I think that would satisfy the neighbors more. But this business about four units and a 3F 4,000 neighborhood, I, I would just respectfully ask the board to respect that.
Okay, so let me just ask, is the applicant on the line? Mr. Rivero, are you the, are you the, you're the designer? Is, is the owner, the property owner on the line? Ms. Ambassador, can you help out, please? Thomas?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, so Mr. Rivero, are you the property owner or the designer?
I'm the designer and I'm also biologically.
Okay, so it sounds like, you know, Ms. Payne Wheeler was offering you some, some middle ground. Would you, would you gain from having another deferral and working this out with the community? Or do you want to go ahead and have us make a decision here and now?
Well, first, I would just like to clarify what the outcome of the GMM meeting was. She's correct in that she wanted additional info and the drawings have been revised where the height of the house and the garage now contorned. We added plantings, we.
But you know, it sounds, it sounds, it points to me that the people who are in opposition are concerned about the number of units, that it's not in keeping with the, the bulk of the abutting property and the density is somewhat excessive. You know, so what, it sounds like there's a weight forward. And I'm just wondering if you would, you could work it out through a deferral?
Well, I'm a very flexible person, but I would just point out that the property across the street, 19 Perrin, is a four-family on a 6,238-square-foot lot.
Yes, but you know, I would, Mr. 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 Rivero, that's probably the exception and not the rule. So may I, may I get, may I get a motion for the deferral, please? Because I think this can be worked out.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Sam, it's like you, go ahead.
Yes, I've been waiting patiently with, with my hand raised, but.
Go ahead.
Yes, I've, I've done before, but, so I think you see the dynamic in, in the, in the neighborhood here. We have mostly received many letters of opposition. We understand, you know, this is a local resident trying to have the housing for the family. But just because that area is a historic district and there are many projects being developed, we want to be cautious about the density. We would love if they can go back and try to resolve this with the neighbors, especially the abutters. We understand there is some support within the community, but not from the abutters. At this point, if they proceed, pursue with the petition, President Jamie would like to oppose as it is now presented. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like a deferral would be prudent, so may I have, get a motion from somebody?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the date, please.
Yeah, but just say the date of December 8th at 1 o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rivero, and thank you, neighborhood. Mr. Rivero, you know, I think there is a middle ground where you can work something out. So we look forward to, to see what you come up with on the 8th of December. Okay, my next project, next project, please?
Call the next two cases.
Could you repeat that, please?
So December 8th at 1 o'clock, Mr. Rivero.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 971-287-643-Morton Street. There is a companion case, BOA 971-286-643-Morton Street. This is a change of occupancy, a child care sentence.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Secretary. I just got a note that the applicant would like to defer. So may we just get them on the record, please?
Sure, name and address for the record, please. Your name and address for the record, please.
Ms. Ambassador, can you unmute the attorney for 643?
Madam Chair, I don't see him on, but I do, I just unmuted. Yeah, Siobhan, you're unmuted. Your attorney's not present.
Oh, thank you. Hi, Madam Chair, this is Siobhan Roberts, the architect. Mr. Michael Washington says he's online and he would speak to that matter and request a deferral.
Okay, thank you. So to, I understand that you're going to request a deferral. May I have a motion, please?
Sound move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed, the date, please?
We have a date of December 8th at 1 o'clock.
So please, when Mr. Washington gets on, let him know it's December 8th at 1 o'clock. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the, the attorney for 620, 622 East, East 8th Street was having computer issues and is now present.
Okay, so let's go to the Terranova's, please.
Hold on, Madam Chair. Then you go back to a case you called earlier, calling BOA 101-8299, 620 to 622 East 8th Street. This is the change occupancy from a two-family to a three-family and extend living, living space to the basement and remodel in the third unit. Violation Article 27P, Section 5, this is in South Boston iPod. Article 68, Section 7, the dwelling unit is forbidden to use in the basement. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Jim, you're unmuted.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Jim Ruddsir. I represent Mark and Deanna Terranova. And my office is at 546 East Broadway in South Boston. Before you is a, is an application for variances relative to the construction of a third unit in a two-family home. The proposed unit is in the basement. It's 612 square feet. We have clear ceiling height of seven feet, six inches. We have two, we have two means of egress together with windows that would be used for an emergency egress. The home has been owned by the, in the Terranova family since the 1980s. And the proposed tenant in the, in this third unit would be Deanna's developmentally-disabled brother, who therefore will not be driving, triggering, so the concern about the additional unit relative to parking should not be a concern.
Mr. Rudson, was this deferred and what, why, what changed?
We did get one notice for a March hearing, right on March 10th, and I think it was deferred because of the pandemic.
Okay.
I've never requested a deferral. We participated in the community process and I think we can count on the support of the community.
So, I mean, I think the question is, and I think it's something that you will, will understand, is that the relief goes with the building and not with the owner. And the use is forbidden in South Boston. A purely basement unit in, is, is forbidden. So I'm just wondering if there's another solution to this that you might be able to figure out if, if there are other family, other family members living in this building, is whether there is a way of connecting that basement living space to the first-floor unit?
This is a, this is a home that has been existing for years. It is sort of your classic two-family duplex. The, the sec, the Unit 1, which is three and a half feet up from the grade, is a two-bedroom, one-bath unit, and that's the one that's currently being occupied. The, the proposal is modest, it's safe, it has the adequate egress. The only new construction would be the six-feet-by-12-feet window and stairwell that would be out the back of the house. And it would just, it would, it would allow for the safety and security of this family member and at the same time keep appropriate highest use.
Is, is Unit 1, well, we, we, we're not so totally interested in highest and best use, but we are interested in neighborhood quality and what this means about having a basement unit in perpetuity in the community. Is there a family member living in Unit 1, in Unit 1?
Yes.
Yes?
And, and that would be.
So, so I, I think, I think the question for you is, if you connect Unit 1 with Unit B in the basement, that will eliminate your violation of having a pure basement unit, a pure basement unit?
And, and I, I recognize your concerns and it, the, the, the intended occupant in Unit 1 would be, would be Mark and Deanna's adult children now. And I just think that everybody, in the interest of independence, would prefer that the, the proposal get considered as, as proposed.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The, the plans are problematic. And the, the basement unit is majority below ground. And the drawings, the elevation on 821 show that the floor to the bottom of the sill of the windows is six foot three. And that's, I mean, 404 is the minimum. So you're not, so I, I appreciate the particulars of the family dynamics, but as you pointed out, this is not, we're not ruling relative to the family's needs but to the property. And you're essentially creating, would be creating a situation that would have inadequate natural lighting and be a violation of the code.
I don't believe that was cited by inspectional services. There was a non-practical alternative in this property because the property is built on the property line with Norcross Place.
Okay, you know what? Does this, from this perspective, does this case have any merit? Because, I mean, my concern is if you have a developmentally-disabled person in the basement that's purely 99% below grade, should there be an emergency? What position does it leave a person in, in, you know? So I'm trying to help you out in this, trying to talk about a connection to the fourth-floor dwelling unit, but it seems that you're really focused on having this as an independent unit. And, you know, it, it's, I don't know, I'm just feel, I'm having a hard time with this.
There are a couple of means of egress.
There are, there are.
There is a direct means of egress in, from the back through this proposed window well, egress stairwell. But then also, as you note on Plan A-1.1, there are stairs from the first-floor entry area down into the basement.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support, thank you.
Is, go ahead. Is, can you, go ahead.
Hi, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Kalmeron from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support as the abutters meeting went well and our understanding is for a disabled family member, therefore the councilor is supporting. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in support or in opposition?
Jim, you're unmuted.
Oh, that's me. That's Deanna, I'm Deanna Terranova. I just pressed.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, secretary here. We have one letter of support and two letters of opposition. The opposition basically is parking.
Okay.
I have no further raise hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, I mean, I think, I think we have to make a decision here about whether extension into a basement when the use is forbidden is something that we would want to support. So may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion tonight.
Is there a second? There is no second, so may I have an alternate motion?
Justine, I'll second that motion.
You second those motions? Thank you, Mr. Kandall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so it's been denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-3509, 820 William T. Morrissey Boulevard. This is the replacement both sides face of the existing 48-foot-wide, 14-feet-high billboard. One side currently static, the other side currently trivision, with a new digital signage cabinet. The violation is Article 11, Section 7. Electronic signs are conditional. Article 11, Section 6. Billboards is conditional. And Article 65, Section 40. A digital billboard is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Philip Shazula. My office address is 800 Morrissey Boulevard, Dorchester, Mass.
So please tell us what's, what you're proposing?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson and distinguished members of the zoning board of appeals. I, yeah, our family's been a proud member of the Dorchester community for over 68 years. Every day, we work alongside 250 team members, the majority of which who live in the community. As with many other businesses, we've been severely impacted by COVID-19, and we are struggling. So I want to say thank you in advance for your consideration of this proposal. Our front leader is our marketing partner. They're also on this call, Angela Rufo from, from our front. So just a quick bit of history. My dad and my two uncles have one expand there.
Hold on, hold on. So please help me understand the proposal. So is it that this is an existing 48-by-14-foot-high billboard that you want to now digitize in some way? Are you expanding the size of it in any way, shape, or form?
No, I don't.
Is it still keeping to the size that you've always added it?
It's keeping the size we've always had.
Okay. And so then your request then is for the, for having it digitized, in other words?
Correct. Currently, one side is static and the other side is a trivision. It's a mechanically moving three-sided message.
Okay. And let's see. Is anybody, any, Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chairwoman, the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Services. This project proposal has gone through a robust community process that's lasted over a year and a half, if not a little bit longer. They have had extensive community outreach, including an abutters meeting held near the site, as well as communication consistently with the Pope's Hill Neighborhood Association. There were over 100 letters of support sent into our office in support of this proposal, as well as a petition that ranged about 43 pages of names from local residents and abutter signed on to it. The Pope's Hill Neighborhood Association also voted and sent in a letter of non-opposition to this proposal. We'd like to go on record in support of it.
Thank you. Patrick, was there any conversation about the intensity of the light? Because we've seen these kind of billboards where, for example, I know there've been complaints about the one by the W in Chinatown and also complaints about the one in the Fenway. So was there any conversation about the, the light intensity on this billboard?
There was, yes. At the community meeting held near our site, there was extensive discussion about the intensity of the luminance from the board. The applicant may be able to speak a little bit more to that. From my understanding, they will shine no brighter than the existing board does now. And in working with the Pope's Hill Association, there was also, I believe, some changes to angles so it wouldn't brighten into the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak, either in support or in opposition to this billboard?
Madam Chair, secretary here. Just to reiterate, the mayor's office, we have over 100 letters and signatures in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe the BPDA recommendation was for denial. Could we hear from Mr. Washington?
I thought you might call us on that. Just as, keeping with our policy, Mr. Ehrlich, we always recommend denial on any electronic billboards. That has been our policy for years now. This goes into a proposed amendment that we have been trying to get before the Boston Zoning Commission so that there are rules and regulations that luminance at night does not exceed a certain amount, that hours of operation are limited between certain times. And we've actually run into problems with some elected officials on this because they think that it would make it easier for, for companies to obtain a variance through the Board of Appeal rather than be subject to the same rules and regulations of those who are in the theater district or on Lansdowne Street. But again, reiterating our policy is to reject and deny electronic billboards. I know this area quite well. My kids go to Boston Bowl all the time. But our policy is to recommend denial.
Okay. So Jeff, a follow-up question.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I understand the policy about new billboards. How about an existing frame? And is there any policy between, about distance between lighted billboards or electronic billboards?
That, that is governed by the state in terms of distance between the two. And there's no way I'm going to say it on the record because I know I'd get it wrong. I want, but the distance between signs is regulated by the state.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else to speak, either in support or in opposition?
I see no further raise hands. No further raise hands, Madam.
Okay. I'm going to ask the question of the applicants. Is, are there any other electronic billboards in proximity to this one?
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. Any billboards, what?
Any electronic billboards in proximity to this one?
No, ma'am.
And what are the looms that you're proposing to shot, to have it shine at night?
Digital billboards are, you said the lumens?
Lumens, yeah.
Yeah. The digital billboards are highly regulated by the MassDOT. So the billboard will shine no brighter than .03-foot candles above ambient light. The board will change according to the lighting conditions. So in the daytime, it would be slightly brighter, and at nighttime, much dimmer. So it's only slightly brighter than ambient light. That's all it needs. Currently, our board now is illuminated by eight 500-watt bulbs. So we believe the overall effect would be much dimmer.
Okay. So given that information, may I have a motion, please? I hear that heavy sigh, but this is an existing steel structure.
If I could add, Madam Chair, it's Jeff Hampton again at the BPDA. If the board were to create any sort of zoning relief, could we ask that there be a significant design review just to make sure that the signs do, in fact, face away from Pope's Hill?
Okay. And did we hear from the elected, the city councilor from this, from this neighborhood? I know we heard from the mayor's office. We hear from the city councilor. I, I don't know who the city councilor is in this neck of the woods.
Councilor Baker.
Did we hear from Councilor Baker? Nope. Okay. So given this information, may I have a, a motion, please?
Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve with extensive BPDA designer view.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to call the next case. Before I do that, it's 1449-1453 Hyde Park Ave, moving forward. Madam, Madam Chair, I have a note that they're going to defer, but I just need to hear if somebody's online.
Okay. Let's, let's go to Brighton Ave, and then we'll come back to Hyde Park Ave.
Very good. Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-5883, 178 Brighton Avenue. This is unit four, legalize the basement and the area of additional living space. The violation is Article 9, Section 1. Extension of a nonconforming use is conditional. Article 51, Section 17. The floor-to-air ratio was excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Jason Savage, on behalf of Calabria Law, One Boston Place, Suite 2600, on behalf of Michael Luang.
So tell us what's being proposed.
Madam Chairwoman and the board, we're proposing to legalize the basement area. This building was constructed in 1920. The condominium that it's part of, it was, was implemented in 1986. In 2005, our clients purchased the property. The offer purchased was for a legal four, two bedrooms on the first floor, two bedrooms in the downstairs. Unfortunately happened was she was a victim and, and purchased a three-bedroom. And we are now seeking, after, after a water damage in 2018, in, we're receiving two violations. We are seeking to reduce the far and to extend the living area into the basement.
See, I think I'm just having a little bit of, um... Mark, can you please explain what's going on here?
I'm looking at the drawings, and I'm a little puzzled because the existing basement floor plan shows that it's already living space.
So, Mr. Jason, so let me just ask you a question. So what is, so this is supposed to be four units? And was there, and, and this, are they proposing to extend living space into the basement then for this unit?
When?
Or are they proposing to legalize a unit in the basement? What are they trying to do?
They're proposing to, to make legal what, what was there. When they purchased the property, they believed it was previously a legal four-bedroom unit. At this point, it's, they're looking to legalize what is currently there.
So it's a specific...
Is there any work planned?
So at present, as you can see from the plans, they're intending to fill in the door to the, the storage and utility closet and make a new door into the hallway for a more common space. You know, approach if necessary. The additional things that they're looking to do is to to create, you know, and code compliant means of egress in each bedroom and to, you know, adjust as necessary.
And what about, I mean, the, the plan shows almost every room having different ceiling heights. But there's a minimum that has to be maintained throughout living space. And doesn't appear, that doesn't appear to be the case. Is that going to be remedied?
So the, the plan is to have each, each unit as seven, seven feet eight inches.
Okay. Because on the proposed, I'm looking at A1, the basement plan, and the bathrooms and, and hallways are below that.
As Michael Luang is, is willing to speak on that. He's the contractor here. He is on the call. But I believe the, you know, he intends to make everything code compliant.
Okay. And Colette, can you please go up and show us the first floor and how the first floor connects to this basement portion so we can understand? Okay. So, so this is the living room, extended living room. They have a one-bedroom, okay? And please, can you go to the basement now, Colette?
There is an intent to have staircase, oh, there is, there is currently a staircase that goes up to two levels.
There is, there isn't?
No, there is. There is. There is a staircase. I thought it was part of the plan.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Ehrlich, I'm relying on you. How are the plans?
Puzzling. I mean, yes, there, there is a stairwell down the bottom right between the first and second floors. I, as I said, there are, in the basement, there are multiple ceiling heights, some of which are okay and some of which are not okay. I see there's a door, a new door is created in order to have access to the utility storage, and that's good. The means of egress are unclear to me. And again, you know, this is a problem when we don't get elevations, which I can't tell what percentage. It looks like, well, no, actually, there's a window well, window well section. So there's, um... It looks like it's about 50% below grade. And so they, and so they created a window well. It's just two feet to the bottom, so that's okay. It's just, there's too many different things going on here that I'm not quite sure if everything is code compliant. What, let me ask the applicant, what are the means of egress?
There's two. There's one up into the first floor of the unit, and then there's one out into the hallway, which has an additional staircase out of the building, as well as these three new additional windows per bedroom.
I mean, Madam Chair, I, you know, this is existing. It's about legalizing. And I guess my, I think there's an easy way to deal with this, which is to say that there'd be no building code relief. And then they'll have to, and in order, you know, in order to get a permit, they will have to make sure that their plans reflect that.
That's true. Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Connor, are you on somewhere?
Madam Chairwoman, if you, if you are interested in hearing from Michael Luang, he is on the call. He is the person that created these plans.
Okay. Let's, let's just go to Connor. Connor, are you going to offer an opinion?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Please put your means of egress on the record.
Yeah, sorry. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal, although we do have some concerns. Now, abutters meeting was conducted on Monday, January 27th, where initially, no concerns were raised from residents. There was concerns from one of the members who resided in the building about construction. The applicant went on to the Allston Civic Association, met with them twice, addressing some concerns they had regarding safety uh for the basement living space. We believe that they've, they've made good strides in, in addressing concerns in the neighborhood, especially making sure that whoever occupies the space would be safe. Uh, however, they have not been able to establish communication with the condo association. So we have a letter of opposition from the condo association. We're unaware that the basement was being used as living space. You know, we feel that, we'd feel comfortable supporting with the caveat that the applicant continue working with uh, the condo association to address concerns they may have. But some of it regarding past condo fees and something is, is outside of the realm of ONS's capacity. So we leave that discretion up to the board. Thank you.
So the condo association was unaware that this construction had a pod in the basement? And that it was occupied in the basement, Connor?
That's correct, yes.
Hmm. Interesting, because you know, if, if this was done illegally, and then go back in and condone it, uh, I think we then have a, we, we're ending up having an issue.
Madam Chair, the secretary here. We all, we have those letters that Connor was talking about from the condo association, the bookkeeper. Uh, they were also concerned about utilities.
Okay.
Madam Chairwoman, may I address those issues?
Please.
So the condo association sent in a letter about uh an old boiler, which would be in that storage unit that's being, with the door being filled in and being, uh, you know, the door, an access door.
So I think, I think we need a, we need a basic question asked.
Sure.
Does, is, was this construction in the basement done without the knowledge of the condo association? And what is the position of the condo association?
It, it wasn't, it, it was not done without their knowledge. This is a, a three-bedroom unit. As you can see, there's only one bedroom on the first floor with only six hundred square feet. Um, you know, the, this is what they were deeded, uh, when they purchased the property. Construction again existed before, um, the, you know, before the, the owners uh took possession of the property as a preferred building or buying a four-bedroom.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna get you guys to help me out. I'm fainting. So anybody else could speak in support or in opposition to this project?
Yes, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Wayne Yef, um, Counselor Liz Reden's office, echoing the sentiments, going on support. Would like to see some communication and the approval with the condo association, but we are going on support at this time.
So, so Wayne, you know, we are stuck with, we, we, um, okay. Okay, so you will follow up with the condo association. Somebody will follow up. We need to make a land use decision. Um, may I have a motion, please?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve with the proviso that there be no building code release granted. And I think that by doing that, that's gonna require the, um, plans to be somewhat amended. But I, but, so yeah, that's my motion.
Okay.
Second, Tyrone.
Thank you, Tyrone. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna go back to a previous case. Eight, nine, three, seven, nine, two, one, 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 fourteen forty-nine to fourteen fifty-three, Hyde Park Avenue. Are the, are they on the phone?
Um, it will, hey, anybody here for that project? Mr. Secretary, did you say there was, um?
Madam Chair, I do have a note in regards to it. They would, they were looking to defer it.
And who's the note from?
ISD, I believe.
Yeah, is anybody from the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services?
Sorry.
On this, on this meeting?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, this is Face the shrink with the mayor's office. We did have communication from, uh, the applicant, uh, and they did confirm that they wanted to defer. Uh, the plans have changed. They do wanna have another additional, uh, abutter's meeting just to keep the neighborhood up to date about this project.
Okay, so may I, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the date, please?
We have a date of December eighth at one o'clock.
Thank you. Okay, the meeting, it's, so the motion carries, uh, meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and we will be, um, meeting again next week, same time. Thank you.